One, the time is now 12:47 PM and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education regular meeting of August 10th, 2021 is called to order. Maryland, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are. I will read the rules for public participation and thank you for complying by them. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. If you are in the room, you can monitor it on this monitor here. We are going to be strictly following the time limit, so everyone has an opportunity to speak because we have many speakers. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people and disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation today will occur in person, which will start with the in-person people, and then we will move to virtual public participation. So, I will let you know who the speaker is. When your name is called, you can come to the table, and I will also let you know who is the next speaker to speak. So hopefully that's clear. Today, our first speaker is Joellen Passarchek from Howell, and she will be followed by Liz Malick from Williamson.
Hi, thank you all. Yeah, I'm Joellen. I'm a former teacher. My background is in child development. Louder?
Yeah, a little louder.
My background is in child development and elementary ed, and thank you so much for your time. As you are evaluating the science behind the mask and the vaccine recommendations, I personally subscribe to the notion of first do no harm. And today, I want to share some studies with you that have indicated that masks can be very harmful indeed to children, especially their cognition. I have 47 studies. Obviously, I can't share them all, but I want you to understand that a number have been done already that confirm the ineffectiveness of masks and also negative health effects. But I want to focus on one that was pulled, a group of studies that was pulled together by an epidemiologist named Paul Alexander and his colleagues. He says in summary, "Children do not readily acquire SARS-CoV-2 and spread it to other children, teachers, or endanger parents. This is settled science. Children should not be required to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID." And since we don't have any studies that show that the vaccine is safe and effective in children, or adults for that matter, I feel that this puts our children as guinea pigs if we were to go ahead and enforce vaccine mandates at this time. But how dangerous is the virus? Well, according to Dr. Alexander and some studies at Stanford University, less than 1% of persons 70 years old or older will die from the virus. And that is equivalent to the threat of influenza. We know that it's even lower in children, so it's 5/100 of 1%. Data suggests that children not only have extremely low risk, as mentioned above, but they naturally have the capability of evading the SARS-CoV-2 virus due to the lack of ACE2 receptors in their nostrils. A study was done in Germany that put children in masks for nine minutes, and the German Environmental Office says that any amount of carbon dioxide in your blood levels over 2,000 parts per million is dangerous. Seven-year-olds at the end of this study came out with a level of 25,000 parts per million carbon dioxide in their lungs. So, we have numerous neurologists that have said that cognition is impacted by this. I think we need to think long and hard before we would place that in the schools. And what if we were trying to protect children, but we were actually causing very serious harm to them? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Liz Malick, followed by Jennifer Smith. And if I mispronounce your name, please feel free to correct me.
Yes, it's Liz Malisch. Thank you. Hey, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name's Liz Malisch. I have children in the Williamson School District, both who have autoimmune health issues, and I've been their biggest advocate since the day where they were born for their health. So I'm here reading an open letter on behalf of Moms for Liberty, Ingham County. We represent approximately 120,000 parents from over 100 parent advocacy groups in the great state of Michigan, and we hereby inform you that we will not allow a repeat of the 2020-2021 school year. We've had enough of the forced mandates, the knee-jerk reactions, and government overreach in decision-making and the well-being of our children. We will not co-parent with the government. We have watched our children succumb to harm at the hands of the government and will not tolerate the continuation of it. We believe in choice and parental rights. We believe that all children have, should have the right to education free of mandates that have not been proven necessary or beneficial. Universal and one-size-fits-all approaches have failed Michigan's schoolchildren. As we enter this next school year, parents must have a choice. Education should not be conditioned upon wearing a mask, scheduled COVID testing, or vaccination status. Our children should not be mandated to miss school for 14 days due to close-contact quarantines. Parents should be the decision-makers for health and well-being of our children and no longer remain silent. We stand up for our children and their rights. To officials who have respected parental choices, we applaud you. We anticipate and appreciate your continued support of children and our rights as parents to do what's best for them as individuals. We do not wish to take away from the learning environment of any child and therefore support choices for individual families. For the officials who do not support parents' and our rights to choose, please know our voices, our votes, and our dollars will be directed to schools, candidates, businesses that support Michigan's parents and students. Calls for mandates, lockdowns, and universal masking in schools are not rooted in science and have caused significant harm to our most vulnerable in our state, our children. Over 120,000 and growing have linked arms as mothers, fathers, educators, healthcare professionals, and community members to make sure that parents always have a seat at the table when the issue of education of our children. We implore you to do what's right and stop pushing fear, political agendas, and bad science that defeat our most precious members of society. Enough is enough. We will not remain silent. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Smith, followed by Nicole Colers.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for having me today. I represent Livingston County in our newly formed chapter of Moms for Liberty. And I just want to say, as a parent, I don't have a written statement here, but I do want you to know that I have three children in Brighton School District, one at the high school level, one in intermediary, and one in the elementary. I decided halfway through the year to homeschool my younger children, and we had no choice but to allow my older son, with a heart condition, to go back to in-person learning because of mental health as well as family grades. The district was not prepared, and this is not a bash on the district. We did the best that we could do with what we had, but they were not prepared to educate children virtually, and I don't think children should be educated virtually. He needed to go back, and at the, against the advice of his doctors, we allowed him to go back. And it did make a huge impact on his life, but I do want to say he was masked, and he returned home with headaches. He had times where he was stressed about tests, and he asked to leave early, and he did. Many times, came home with higher blood pressure. I would check it repeatedly. His pulse ox, of course, as a heart patient mom, I have a pulse ox reader as well, that was elevated because he wasn't getting appropriate air. And to expect teenagers to be in a germ-free environment, wearing a mask or without a mask, is a crazy assumption if you've ever been in any school, but I'm speaking on the behalf of the high school. I would like you to strongly consider to leave the choice for what goes on my child's body up to me, and you just educate these people, because that's what we're bringing you to do. That's what we're bringing them to you to do, is to educate them. You leave the choice of what they wear up to us as parents, and let your jobs be simple and educate. As for my younger children, they will not return, and I won't continue to support the district in that fashion unless masks are alleviated, because it is hindering to communication at kids at a younger level. And my middle schooler just feels that he just doesn't want to wear it. It's uncomfortable and very distracting. He does have ADHD, and for kids with that, that is just one more thing that is making them feel self-conscious, or distracted, or lack of focus on. So I'm just speaking from the heart today. I didn't have anything planned, but I plead with you to just do your jobs and educate these kids, and let us be parents, and protect these freedoms that we do have of choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final in-person speaker today is Nicole Colers.
Hi, thank you for having us here today. My name is Nicole, and I'm a Brighton parent. First of all, we're not here to demand that anybody remove the mask and not be allowed to vaccinate. That is a personal choice. That is why we're here. We don't want to force our beliefs on anyone else. That's not our job. We're the parents. These are our children. We should have the ultimate say. This also means that we need the freedom to choose whether or not we send our children to school in a mask or inject an unknown substance into our children. It's our choice. Let me share how your choices have affected my children. I started the year with three children in Brighton schools. By the first week of school, two remained, and by December, only one. Only one of my children remained in Brighton schools. I removed two of them to homeschool. I removed my children due to lack of support for their special education needs. My children were left behind. Not one person reached out with guidance or to check in. Not one single person. These are students with 504 plans. We spent the remainder of the year homeschooling, and if the same harmful restrictions are forced on children again, I have no hesitation to homeschool. My remaining child, also with a medically-based 504 plan, was left to fend for himself. One teacher reached out after my son missed a month's worth of live classes and numerous assignments. He was sick, and one teacher reached out. The month-long illness was the very reason for the 504 plan, and no teachers were willing to abide by this legal plan, which specifically states modified assignments in time of illness. My child was drowning in academia, and no one cared. Now, this year, if the same requirements are forced onto the schools, you're going to be putting this child into an accelerated Michigan virtual program with six classes. This kid was barely holding on last year, and you're going to put him in six classes when it's only recommended for two? Two classes for an AB student? Six classes? That's a nightmare. But this is the only option Brighton offers. This is the only option. As an educator, I'm appalled and disgusted by the things happening in public schools. This should not be happening. Your job is education, not to make medical decisions for my child. Never as an educator have I ever once thought, "How can I exclude, abuse, traumatize, or alienate students?"
Thank you for your comments. We will now go to virtual participation. I will turn this monitor around. You may or may not be able to see it, but I will let you know when your time is up. Same rules apply, except when you enter the virtual room, you will be admitted one by one if you will say your name and the town you're from, please, so you can keep track. So Mike, can you admit the first person into the room, please?
Yeah, first person is in.
Okay, first person in the lobby. Please say your name and where you're from and provide your comments immediately. Thank you.
I will let you know when your time is up. Same rules apply, except when you enter the virtual room, you will be admitted one by one.
There's a slight delay here.
And the call is off, please. So you can keep track. So Mike, can you admit the first person into the room, please?
If you are not speaking, please mute your microphone. Okay, someone's in the lobby. Please state your name, where you're from.
Please say your name and where you're from and provide your comments immediately. Thank you. I will let you know when your time is up. Same rules apply. So...
Is someone in the lobby?
Nobody called my name yet.
I think she is.
Well, please state your name and where you're from, the lady that just spoke, and we'll hear your public comment right now.
Okay, my name is Susan Halter from Spring Lake.
Okay, Susan, please provide your three minutes of comments. Thank you for joining.
Okay, my two minutes of comment is for you to listen to Dr. Dan Stock's comments.
I'm still too discharged. Dr. Dan Stock, 5777 West 7th and North, Concordville, Indiana. To address your comments, gee, it's hard to believe we're 18 months into this and still having a problem, and I would suggest the reason we still have a problem is because we're doing things that are not useful, and we're getting our sources of information from the Interstate Board of Health and the CDC, who actually don't bother to read science before they do this. I'm actually a functional immunology medicine physician. That means I am specially trained in immunology and inflammation regulation, and everything being recommended by the CDC and Interstate Board of Health is actually contrary to all the rules of science. So things you should know about coronavirus and all other respiratory viruses, they are spread by aerosol particles, which are small enough to go through every mask by the age of literature that supports all of that is in the flash drive that we presented to you and has been given to the secretary. As a matter of fact, it quotes at least a few studies sponsored by the NIH to that exact fact, even though the CDC and NIH have chosen to ignore the very science that they paid to have done. That is why you keep struggling with this, is because you cannot make these viruses go away. The natural history of all respiratory viruses is that they circulate all year long, waiting for the immune system to get sick through the winter or become deranged, as has happened recently with these vaccines, and then they cause symptomatic disease. Because they cannot be filtered out, and they have animal reservoirs, and this is a very important point, no one can make this virus go away. The CDC has managed to convince everybody that we can handle this like we did smallpox, where we could make a virus go away. Smallpox had no animal reservoirs. The only thing it learned to infect was humans. That's why we were able to make that virus go away. That will not happen with this any more than it will with influenza, the common cold, respiratory syncytial virus, adenoviral respiratory syndrome, or anything else that has animal reservoirs. So the reason you can't do this is because you're trying to do something which has already been tried and can't be done. Equally important is that vaccination changes none of this, especially with this vaccine. And I would hope this board would start asking itself, before it considers taking the advice of the CDC, the NIH, and the State Board of Health, why we are doing things about this that we didn't do for the common cold, influenza, or respiratory syncytial virus. And then ask yourself, why is a vaccine that is supposedly so effective having a breakout in the middle of the summer when respiratory viral syndromes don't do that? And to help you understand that, you need to know the condition is called antibody-mediated viral enhancement. That is a condition done when vaccines work wrong, as they did in every coronavirus study done in animals on coronaviruses after the SARS outbreak, and done in respiratory syncytial virus, where a vaccine used in a vulnerable individual, done the wrong way, which by cannot be done right for a respiratory virus with very low pathogenicity rate, causes the immune system to actually fight the virus wrong and let the virus become worse than it would with native infection. And that is why you are seeing an outbreak right now. In fact, in that flash drive you're going to have coming to you, and in the emails with six actual real-world studies showing that 75% of people who had COVID-19 positive symptom cases in Barnstable, Massachusetts outbreak were fully vaccinated.
Ms. Halter? Thank you for your time.
Therefore, there is no reason...
Okay, next person in the lobby. Please state your name and town you're from.
Hi, my name is Kylieam Maxey. And, can you hear me?
Not very well, if you could speak up.
Can you hear me better? Sorry.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
That's great. If you could please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
My name is Kylieam Maxey. I am a resident of Lake Orion, Michigan. My son attends Kingsbury Country Day School in Oxford, Michigan. My comment is as follows. My son attended school last year, he's five years old, and he wore his mask every day. And he, contrary to what many parents are saying, he was proud to wear his mask. And he was proud to wear it because he knew that that meant he had the opportunity to go to school in person. And this year, he's proud to wear his mask again. I've heard a lot of comments about parents talking about their children having had low pulse oximeter ratings and everything else. My son has some health issues, and he's gone to the University of Michigan, and my other son, who is three, has also been admitted to the University of Michigan Hospital for days at times, and they've had no problem breathing. They've had to wear their masks in the hospital the whole time. But last year, my son was in a school that was fully masked, and we had zero outbreaks in that school, and I'm proud of that. This year, without any mandate, the school is now saying that the masks are optional. And a lot of the kids who have tried to come to school, we've tried to go to events, are getting comments made about wearing their masks and getting bullied for it. And I think that we need to follow the recommendations of the CDC and NIHSS, and not leave it up to schools and parents, because we need to follow science. And I appreciate your time. I'm sorry I didn't have anything better prepared.
We appreciate you taking the time to join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Please, please state your name and the town you're from, and provide your three minutes of comments.
Yes, I'm from Grand Bling, Michigan. I have two daughters at a 10 Grand Bling High School. My is on face mask.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I missed your name.
I'm sorry, Tony St. John.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, so I have two students at Grand Bling High School. My comments on the mask and, you know, the testing of unvaccinated children and so on, and the discrimination, I'm just strongly against that. My daughter, for the last year during this COVID, had severe mental problems with suicide watch for months with not going back to school, not seeing the faces. She's having problems with social anxiety. She doesn't know how to deal with people because she can't see them. She doesn't know what they're thinking or feeling. I think this is destroying our children, destroying them. And my daughter was in and out. This has just been a horrible nightmare. This was, we had COVID, and I know COVID has been devastating to people. We have also been affected by it, but we cannot torture our young people like this or the rest of society. If you want the vaccination, get the vaccination. If you want to wear masks, wear a mask. If you want to do virtual school, these are all choices that we have now. People should do their own risk assessment for them and for their children. And that is my comment.
Thank you for joining us. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
Next caller in the lobby, please state your name and where you're from, and provide your three minutes of comments.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Ayers. I'm from Rochester Hills, and I had also emailed the board in regards to an NIH study done in November 22nd of 2020. I'm just going to touch upon the fact that parents need choice with masks. In listening to the meeting, I was desperately trying to hear members speak on today's meeting, and because of the masks, I had a very difficult time hearing more about the poor ventilation. And I think it was 105 buildings throughout the state of Michigan. So I don't understand how masking children in poorly ventilated buildings is going to help their health. Also, there are several psychological issues with wearing masks, including increased carbon dioxide from wearing masks. Germophobia is one listed in June 30th, 2020, Journal of Obsessive, Compulsive, and Related Disorders, titled, "Masks Create Irrational Fear of Germs and a False Sense of Protection from Disease Leading to Antisocial or Even Hostile Behavior Towards Those Not Wearing a Mask," titled, "COVID-19 Obsessive Compulsive Disorder in Invisible Life Forms That Threaten the Self." Masks have also been toxic in October 29th, 2018, at Fashion United. Many, if not most, masks and face coverings, including cloth, are made with toxic and carcinogenic chemicals, including fiberglass, lead, NFE, phthalates, excuse my pronunciation, polyfluorinated chemicals, and formaldehyde that will outgass and be inhaled by the wearer. And it says, "See five mean hazardous chemicals including from China by Fashion United." As a parent, I'm strongly opposed to mask-wearing in the classroom. Parents should have choice. This also, masking also deters English, students who speak English as a second language. It suppresses the immune system. It ramps up acne, bulgaritis. Students cannot see their teachers' expressions and vice versa, which deters learning. And as a child development major and a psychology minor, I'm quite aware of this. And I've also heard stories of local moms telling me how their young children came home wearing somebody else's dirty mask. So, in conclusion, I thank you all so much for your time and for listening to me, and it's much appreciated, and I conclude my statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller, please state your name and the town you're from, and then provide your three minutes of comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Stephanie Margalai, and I'm from Troy, Michigan. I just wanted to make a public comment from a study from MZPI. It says, "A pioneer in scholarly open access publishing, MZPI has supported academic communities since 1996, based in Basel, Switzerland. MZPI has the mission to foster open scientific exchange in all forms across the disciplines. Our 359 diverse peer-reviewed open access journals are supported by more than 84,200 academic editors. We serve scholars from around the world to ensure the latest research is freely available, and all content is distributed under a Creative Commons Attribution license." This is a review on masks. The title is, "Is a Mask That Covers the Mouth and Nose Free from Undesirable Side Effects in Everyday Use and Free of Potential Hazards." On page 30, it reads, "Since it can be assumed that children react even more sensitively to masks, the literature suggests that masks are a contradiction for children with epilepsy as a trigger for seizures. In the field of pediatric, special attention should be also paid to mask symptoms described under psychological, psychiatric, and sociological effects with possible triggering of panic attacks by CO2 rebreathing in the case of predisposition and also reinforcement of claustrophobic fears. The mask-related disturbance of verbal and nonverbal communication and thus of social interaction is particularly serious for children. Masks restrict social interaction and block positive perceptions such as smiling and laughing and emotional mimicry. The proven masks induce mild and moderate cognitive impairment with impaired thinking, decreased attention and dizziness, as well as the psychological, neurological effects should be additionally taken into account when masks are compulsory at school and in the vicinity of both public and nonpublic transport, also regarding the possibility of an increased risk of accidents. The exclusion criteria mentioned in pediatric studies on masks should also apply to an exclusion of these children from the general mask obligation in accordance with scientific findings for the protection of the sick children concerned. The long-term sociological, psychological education consequences of a comprehensive masking requirement extended to schools are also unpredictable with regard to the psychological and physiological development of healthy children. Interestingly, according to the Corona thesis paper of the University of Bremen, children are infected less often. They become ill less often. The lethality is close to zero, and they also pass on the infection less often, according to the thesis paper 2.0 of the German University of Bremen on page 6. Studies conducted after real-life conditions with outcomes endpoint showing hardly any infection, hardly any morbidity, hardly any mortality, and only...
I'm sorry, your time has ended. Thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller, please state... I'm sorry, your time has ended. Thank you for calling in. Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller, please state your name, the town you're from, and provide your three minutes of comments. If you are talking, we cannot hear you. Next caller.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, please state your name, town you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Laura. I'm from Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. Um, I'm calling, uh, to make a, a public comment. Um, I am a healthcare provider in an inpatient setting and I've worked with COVID patients since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, so I'm here to, to speak on people that I've seen suffer and dying on their behalf. These aren't just stats and numbers. These are actual people. Um, and I'm also speaking as a parent, um, in the Bloomfield Hills School District. I am calling to encourage the Michigan Department of Education, um, to push and pressure districts basically to follow CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Michigan Department of Health guidelines. Um, we should be requiring universal masking, social distancing and screening, among other mitigation factors. I know some people are trying to do research on their own, finding any reason to avoid implementing mandates. Um, but I'm not an infectious disease expert. I'm not a public health and safety expert, but I'm smart enough to know and defer to experts and follow recommendations because they have put in proper research and have access to all the data, weighing out risk versus benefits, and still are recommending to do all these things because we are in a pandemic, whether people want to believe it or not. I know a lot of people are referencing, um, research and data, um, random articles, um, to promote their viewpoint. Um, but a lot of the stuff that's being, um, stated are studies that are basically outdated when we're talking about the wild type and other variants versus Delta. We're talking about the Delta variant and the stuff that, um, that we knew in the past is different. The Delta variant is more infectious. It causes increased rates of hospitalization and it's two times more likely to result in death. Vaccinated people can also become infected and spread the virus, and that's why universal masking is imperative when we go back to face-to-face, um, in school. Um, I would also like to point out that these guidelines should not be watered down or negotiated. It reduces their efficacy and puts children in harm's way. There is nothing anyone will find to delegitimize these guidelines. You either follow the recommendations or you go against the guidelines that are given by state, national and county levels. This is not a both sides argument. It's either expert recommendations or a bunch of stuff that has no merit. I've been wearing masks before the pandemic in an operating room setting. I currently wear an N95 at work with a surgical mask over it and my health has not been impacted. If anything, I have been less sick over the past year and a half due to wearing masks in multiple settings. Masks do not cause respiratory complications or decreased oxygenation. It doesn't cause increase in CO2 retention and it doesn't cause an increase, um, um, it doesn't cause, uh, increase in respiratory infections. I mean, those are just all lies and we know it at this point. I beg the Michigan Department of Education to please follow the guidelines. Otherwise, we could end up in situations that's going on in Florida, Louisiana and Texas where there's increased rates of children in the hospital. Um, and someone mentioned that, you know, the government's harming kids with all these mandates, but the government banning masks in certain areas in the South has caused devastation in hospitals there. And I would hate to see that come here, which I believe it will anyways because we are not an island and things are spreading south to the northern regions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Please provide your name and town and then three minutes of comments. Next caller, name and town, please. Hello? I'm, I'm having a difficult, really difficult time hearing you. Ma'am, I think it's a, I'm. I can't hear you.
From the State Department of Education.
Hello? Is the caller on the line?
Oh, I think it's.
Hello? I'm sorry, I'm unable to hear you. Is there anything you can do on your end for the sound?
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Please provide your name, the town you're calling from, and your three minutes of comments. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Pennola. I'm calling from Brighton, Michigan. I'm a parent of four children in the district of Brighton, four public school children. Um, I just wanted to call and give a public comment regarding, um, how ridiculous I think it is that the government get involved in, um, parenting. Um, we, I am, I am the mother. My children listen to myself and my husband. We make the choices that are best for them. Um, they attended school. Thankfully Livingston County was fantastic last year and allowed for, um, in-person school all year, besides when the governor mandated the shutdown for the high school students, which was detrimental to my son. He's a high schooler. Um, he's a very active young man who has plenty of friends and plays sports, but to see him cooped up in his bedroom the way he was for, for those weeks there before Christmas was, it was agonizing. It was painful. Um, I just implore you to allow parents to make the best choice for their children. Um, I got involved in the testing of the student athletes, which was proved, actually the benefit of the testing, which was awful, proved exactly what we knew is these kids are not carrying coronavirus. Um, every single week for the testing at our high school, I monitored the numbers. Um, they tested 3,570 spring athletes through the eight weeks that the spring sports lasted. We had 11 positive tests with not confirmation that those were even proven to be, um, negative after a PCR test. So what we did find out is that 99.9% of the tests, um, or the kids were not, um, positive with coronavirus. It is unnecessary to mask. Um, their social interaction, their smiles. I have a fifth grader who told me, "Mom, how am I going to know if anyone is happy at school? I can't." She's like, "I didn't meet any new friends this year. I can't see their faces." It's, it's a travesty what we're trying to do to our children. I think, um, your best bet is to allow choice. There's so much divisiveness in our country right now and I think a giant step in the right direction of getting everyone to be friendly again, maybe back on the same page, would just be to implement choice. If someone wants to wear their mask and get their kids vaccinated, that's by all means up to them. But that's not something that should be mandated by the state. The parents need to be the boss of what's best for their children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller, please provide your name, the town you're from, and start your three minutes of comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Topaleski. I am from Brighton, Michigan. And the point I would like to address today's meeting is, um, saying no to masks and vaccine mandates. Uh, I'd like to start out first with masks. My first point is this.
I can barely hear you, ma'am.
Okay, is this better?
Yes, it's great. Thank you.
Okay. Um, the first point would be with masks. Numerous studies cite the severe detrimental effects of wearing masks, which include CO2 poisoning in the blood and expelled breath of mask wearers within seconds of being masked, increased anxiety, headaches, and mental impairments of mask wearers, and finally, severe topical and lung infections caused by masks and the harmful bacteria they breed. Now multiply all these harmful effects by six plus hours a day or 200 plus days out of the year, and this will lead to my second point of how these abusive mask mandates violate Michigan legislation found in Act 451 of the Revised School Code. Under Act 451 of 1976, under section 380.18, I'm sorry, section, um, 380.1307B, it lists a statement of prohibited practices. These, the state policy under this section shall include a clear statement that all of the following practices are prohibited for school personnel in the public schools of this state under all circumstances, including emergency situations. I'm not going to read all of them, but I'm going to highlight two of them. That would be, um, letter H, which is any restraint that negatively impacts breathing, and letter K, which includes any other type of restraint. Now, the next point is, under that same act, section 3801804, says, "What happens when you neglect or refuse to reform these acts and violations and their penalty? Except as otherwise provided in this act, a school official or a member of a school board or intermediate school board or other person who neglects or refuses to do or perform an act required by this act or who violates or knowingly permits or consents a violation of this act is guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by a fine or imprisonment or both." So I am imploring the school board to not only make mask mandates come back again. We do not want this. Thousands of parents across the state do not want this. We also do not want vaccine mandates, which, um, also would be included under the violations of this Act 451, codes 380.31307B and 3801804, because under those sections, letter E, "The intentional application of any noxious substance or stimulus that results in physical pain or extreme discomfort." A noxious substance or stimulus is prohibited.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No to mask mandates or vaccines.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Letter.
Okay, yes. If you are not the caller who is going to offer public comment, please mute your line. Yes, please provide your name and the town you're from and your comments. Hello?
Uh, my name is Rachel Atwood and I live in Januson, Michigan. And I'm calling because I have a special needs child who has autism. My son was unable to be in school this year because half of his IEP became banned social behaviors. I was horrified that after two years of teaching my son to approach another child, that if I sent him to school, they were going to teach him to stay away from the other children, that they weren't going to allow him to share objects with others. My son is only six years old and these kids with disabilities, early intervention is key. And the future of my son's ability to function as a normal social individual relies on him learning these social behaviors at this young age. He is unable to medically wear a mask. He is exempt, but I still was unable to send him to school unmasked because he was going to be around a bunch of adults who would be masking. He is severely speech delayed and there are children in the schools who also have hearing issues and he needs to be able to see all faces to be able to process communication. All these special needs kids were being abused socially and they were not being served. A virus should not trump the American with Disabilities Act. All of these children deserve to be able to get what they need. The children that died in this nation with COVID are far outnumbered by the suicides. When my son was in, we were in shutdown, I observed him regressing. I started seeing him develop really awful repetitive behaviors we had never seen before that we have still been working with him to dismiss. When I send him back to school this year, it will only be if he is allowed to approach another human being without being told no, without being told that he's unsafe. Teaching our children to be afraid of the air that they breathe is abusive. If any of these behaviors had been reinforced in any other setting before this pandemic, it would have been considered child abuse. But under the guise of trying to protect my son from a virus that will not kill him, it was deemed okay. We need to remember that not everyone is able to or should be wearing a mask. My son is one of those people. He's been denied medical care. He's been denied his education and we are done with complying. I want my son back in his school. They do a great job. We love our educators and we want them to do what they do best with this amazing special needs program in the Januson Public Schools. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Is able to or should be wearing a mask?
Next caller, please. Someone has their YouTube running in the background. If you can mute that. Thank you. Next caller, please. Name and where you're from. Provide your comments.
My name is Kim Wade. I'm from Charlotte, Michigan.
Get, is it, did you say Jen or Kim Wade?
Kim.
Wade from Charlotte.
Wade, W-E-I-C-H-T.
Okay.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Not very well.
Could you please speak up?
I sure can. How is this?
That's great. Thank you.
All right. So first, thank you for all you guys do. I do not reveal your positions and I applaud you for being willing to sit in on these boards and fight on behalf of our children as a whole body. Um, I am a vote no on the masks and the vaccines. Um, I do have many personal reasons for that, but overall, it is something of personal choice. Um, these kids are, you know, a lot of them are uncomfortable. Some of them are okay with masks and that's fine. That's the beauty of choice. Same with the parents. Some of them are fine with the mask and prefer masks. That's fine. That's beauty of choice. We are in the United States. We have the beauty of choice here in our country and this is certainly something that deserves that. Um, so again, I am a no and I would appreciate you guys to do all the research. There may not be much science out there yet, but there are known implications of, of issues with mask-wearing due to improper fit, improper use, improper type, uh, more hands in the face from adjusting masks. This all creates unnecessary spread, um, and it is an issue. Um, so thank you. And also, you know, you're looking at your bylaws. Again, I, I implore you to keep researching, um, according to your, your bylaws and the quote you have in the Constitution, you guys do a great job deciding on education for our kids. Please leave medical decisions to us as their parents.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
Next caller, name, city you're from, and provide your comments, please.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Stephen Eskerson, uh, from Howell, Michigan. Um, I'm the father of three children in elementary school in Howell. Um, last year, the protocols in my, in place in my district were successful in mitigating the spread of this pandemic. Um, this year, the same district is, uh, potentially removing nearly all of these successful protocols, heedless of the fact that the Delta variant is becoming more pronounced and elementary students currently have no options for vaccination. Um, I am requesting that the State Board of Education, um, if they're not willing to have mandates for the high school students who are eligible for these vaccinations, to at least consider the mandatory mitigation guidelines for elementary schools throughout the state. I hear other people talking about how there were very few issues with COVID last year and using this as evidence for the need for, uh, for the lack of need for masks or other mitigation efforts, discounting the notion that these efforts could very bel- very well be the reason for the low number of cases. And, um, I do not have anything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Name, city you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, this is Brenda.
Brenda Wardars- Darsky?
Yeah.
Thank you. Can you please provide your comments?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, I am calling from Grand Rapids, Michigan. I am a healthcare administrator as well as a NUTS and a proud parent of three children in one of the largest schools in Grand Rapids. I want to state that the school systems of the state of Michigan owe our kids an apology for masking them up when all the mask studies have been debunked. All the Swiss policy studies that came out this year prove that mask, masking does not work. Pushing this shot and this experiment on our kids and bringing into our schools is not okay. I am saddened and disheartened working in the healthcare system and on our kids with mental health issues that have gone above and beyond the help that they need. and on our kids with mental health issues that have gone above and beyond the help that they need. These are kids as young as four or five. They're being put on anti-anxiety, anti-depressant meds for no reason. The fear mongering has got to stop. We need to abide by the Constitution. God gave us our rights, not the government. I wish everyone would do their due diligence, do the research out there, see what is happening to these kids and the fear it is promoting. I want the State Board to look at the evidence. I don't want to be told, "I believe," or live in fear. I want the facts over the fear, and I want our kids to live in a free country. God bless America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Next caller, please.
Hi.
Please state your name and the town you're from and provide your comments.
Jennifer Tucksohn. And I am from Rochester Hills. I have two children in the Rochester Community School District. I am speaking out today on behalf of many parents in our district to urge you to require that all school districts implement universal masking for this school year. Masks are being advised by all the major public health organizations. They are proven to be safe for kids, and they do help curb spreads. The negative effect of Delta on our children far outweigh any inconvenience of wearing a mask. Masks, we know, work best when everyone wears them. One parent choosing to not have their child wear a mask means my child is less protective. Death, to be clear, is by far not the only metric when it comes to COVID. Children are increasingly becoming sicker and being hospitalized with Delta. We hear that 16-plus vaccination rate is at 70%. But how many 16-plus attend our schools as a proportion of the whole? The vaccination rate is near 0% at the grade school level. Rates of 12- to 15-year-olds are lower, and in several districts, quite lower. That reality is largely being left out of the discussion. School is its own environment, and where Delta finds the unvaccinated, it will spread and spread quickly. This is the warning we are being asked to take seriously. We all know the deep entrenched divisions that are occurring. We all know how this pandemic has sadly been politicized, the public health demonized and outright threatened. We have seen what school districts and Board of Education members have been put through all of last year. The threats to leave districts, harassment, bullying, threats and intimidation tactics. We parents are harassed as well when we try and speak up. Universal masking is the only decision that can be made for the fall. We need you to stand strong in support of this. The tenants at institutions of a learning be critical to development of a student to become a contributing citizen of a society, our science, math, critical thinking skills, being able to discriminate between fact and fiction. You teach our children how when we do not understand something, we look to the experts and learn from them. What message does it give to its students when pseudoscience and personal choice, regardless of the harm, are allowed to overpower these tenants? And as you step down and away from enforcing what the science is telling us to do, you also step away, as a consequence, from protecting our children's health. While in your care, it is your duty to provide a safer environment as possible for all children, regardless of the actions or inactions of parents outside of the school day. Please follow the guidance and institute a universal mask policy and show us that the safety of our children transcends all else. This is a pandemic that we are still in the midst of. What we decide now is critical to the upcoming school year. While I emphasize to those with real learning or medical needs that contradicts mask wearing, those can be handled on an individual basis with a minimum impact to the greater public health as possible. And in fact, universal masking will help.
Thanks for your comments. Next caller. Next caller, please. Thank you for commenting. Please state your name and where you're from.
Uh, yes, my name is Samantha Stahl, and I am calling from Waterford, Michigan. And I have three children in the Waterford School District. Um, I'm calling to say that there should not be a universal mandate on masks, um, due to the fact that that should be a parenting choice and not a government choice. There should also not be a mandate on vaccines either, for the same reasoning. Um, also, we've found that in our school district, the masks tended to be more, um, distracting than doing any good with kids playing with their masks, taking them off, um, not being able to wear them, losing them, and then also, um, with being able to take them off for things like, you know, outside recess, lunchtime, what little difference does it make for those kids to have to sit at a desk every day and wear those masks? Also, you're kind of discriminating against children in the sense that, um, some kids can afford the nicer masks, um, some kids can't. So you're kind of basically showing to the other kids, you know, that they don't, they're not on the same level, like, it kind of shows poverty level. Like, I know that doesn't seem like a big thing, but to some kids it is just the same as it is when these kids have brand-new shoes. Other kids don't. You know, kids take notice, you know, whether we as parents try to stop that or not, but they notice. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you for letting me take the time to comment, and I hope you guys can see that that should be a parenting choice. Thank you.
Next caller, please. Next caller, name and town you're calling from, please, and provide your comments.
Yes, hello, this is Katie McFarland. Um, I am a, uh, parent in the Troy School District. I just have, uh, two concerns I'd like to bring up. Um, first, I'm hoping that the, uh, mask wearing remains optional for the fall semester for the kids. Um, thank goodness, as we've seen with COVID, um, children are very low risk. And if a parent chooses to mask their child, that is, of course, they're right in their decision. Um, this decision should be ultimately left for the parents. Um, a lot of children have experienced, um, quite a bit of anxiety. It inhibits learning. Children really learn, um, by facial recognition, smiles, um, body language. Um, these masks have really done a whole lot of damage to a great deal of children. And enough's enough. Let's not, these kids should not be living in fear. They've been playing all summer long, which is good. That's what they should be doing. So let's get these kids back to some normalcy here and have a sense of humanity again for them. Uh, second of all, um, any, uh, critical race theory teachings, any tenants of that, including diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, racial justice, white privilege, supremacy, uh, social justice, equity, all of this must be banned. This is terribly, terribly abusive. Uh, it is racist. It is Marxist. Um, the view that, uh, black children are victims and that white children are their oppressors is absolutely horrifying. It defies Martin Luther King, the great legacy of Martin Luther King. And there have been many, uh, much evidence that I have seen, especially in some of the reading, the literature that has been provided to students, such as How to, um, How to Be an Anti-Racist, Ibram Kendi. I know all the teachers in the district have read that, as well as White Fragility. Uh, this book is anti-racist. Also, the push for LGBTQ and transgender ideologies onto our kids, that is abusive. These social issues are up for parents to discuss with their children in the home, and they do not belong in school. My stepson has come home, and he has shown me videos that were taken from the Diversity Club during Pride Week of the LGBTQ community. One was RuPaul and drag queens. This is not education. Please, uh, you are leaders. I don't care how much grant money you're being offered. Please have some integrity. Deny this hateful agenda. This is abusive to kids. Kids are not political pawns for these schools. We need to bring parental rights back to education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Name, where you're from. Provide your comments. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, name and where you're from, please, and please provide your comments.
Kim Boer. I'm from Grandville, Michigan. I was not prepared with a comment to, right off the bat. I thought, uh, I would be listening in to what other concerns were as well.
Well, now, I'm sorry, ma'am. I don't have you on my list, so I didn't know you were going to provide public comment either, so it's, you can just choose to listen to the meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you for calling in. Next person, please. Next person, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, thank you for calling in. Next person, please.
And here.
Somebody's got their YouTube. They need to mute that, please. But is there a caller who would like to make a comment? Yes, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Mandy. I'm calling from Harlem, Michigan. And I would just like to ask that you please do not make the mask mandate straight all across the state. I would like that you would please leave it up to each district to handle their own district as they see fit. Um, we've all had a year of however we handled the school year last year. We have, we've learned from the way we did things. We, um, each district handled it and did things differently. Thankfully, Howell was open all year, and they, they actually opened up a whole virtual school to allow for those that did not feel comfortable going back to school. And they are continuing that this year. So they, it gives those that are nervous to go or don't, don't feel comfortable sending their kids to school without masks, it gives them that option to do the virtual online school. We also have the whole, the whole, um, testing thing. Our, I spoke with our superintendent, and he was part of a group that proved that all of the, the regular testing was not, it proved that kids didn't just carry the virus and spread it. The, the rates were extremely low. But just from having, having the whole last year under our belt, each district learned from choices they made. And I feel like we, it should, it should be up to the district. Having, having them have that year under their belt, they can make changes as they see fit. Given that Howell has the virtual option continuing this year, I think that we, we have a great plan. Like, if you make a mask mandate, that ruins that part, all the work that they put into that. So I just ask that you please do not make it a statewide mandate. Leave it up to the districts to choose. They know their district better than anyone else. Each district is completely different. And I just ask that you please do not do the whole state mask mandate. Let the districts decide for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, town you're from, and provide your comments.
Yes, my name is Herman Barbe. I am calling from Oakland County, Michigan. And, uh, I am the proud father of a six-year-old who will be entering first grade this, uh, this coming fall. Um, I definitely agree with many of the past callers. Thank you for the opportunity and for having this discussion. Want to let you know it's time to take off the masks. These kids are phenomenal. These kids have immune systems that God created. And thank God that they are not so susceptible to the detrimental effects from this virus and many other viruses, very frankly. And putting a mask over where their bodies intake oxygen, which is required in order for them to live and learn and talk and function, is, makes zero sense. Unfortunately, this is an overreaction that has implemented and infected the minds of millions of people in this country and across the world. And they need to get back to reality to understand how they live, how to stay healthy, how to protect themselves without pushing a mask over the oxygen intake for their own body. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Please provide your name, your town, and, uh, your comments.
Hello?
Hello? Name, town, and comments, please. Hi. What's your name?
Hi, this is Sheila Cahoon. Sheila Cahoon. I'm from Macomb County, Michigan. And, uh, I thank you very much for your time. My son was in the public school system from 2013 till 2020. And although I know that last year was tough on teachers and faculty, it was tough on everyone. No one is immune to the ripple effect of this virus, which includes the mandates that were put in last year. If you look at the numbers from last year, they show us one thing. Lockdowns, mandates, masking, quarantining, testing, et cetera, did nothing. The virus continues to spread far and wide across the country, regardless of the mandates or emergency orders. We have seen what other open states have done, and it doesn't change their numbers, or ours. Even, everyone has an opportunity to get their shots, even if that's what they choose to do with their families. And if they think the mask protects them from getting a virus, then wear it. No one is telling you not to. Everyone needs to be respectful, respectful of each other's viewpoints, and not bully the other side, which includes teachers and faculty. From today's comments alone, everyone has, has their unique situations that they have to contend with, which is why every parent needs to make the necessary decision for their family. Parents have been teaching their kids for going on two years now. We know what is best for our kids more than any other person on the face of this earth. I do not co-parent with the government. Let me repeat for those not paying attention the first time. I do not co-parent with the government, school faculty, or any other person on this earth, except my husband. We spent a year not putting the children first because we didn't know what was happening with this virus. But we have had plenty of time to do research and discuss. We have, we have data to look at now, and the data shows that the kids are more likely to die in a car accident than to die from this virus. We all need to do the risk assessments and make the decision necessary for our families. The image that always comes to mind is the first image that came out at the beginning of all this mess that showed the different levels of masking. If you believe the level of masking, then wear yours and don't worry about others that don't. I have a parent on oxygen right now, and they're both vaccinated. My son goes over there freely without a mask and no issues whatsoever, and he has all along. We have been unmasked since October, October, and last year, because we began to see more and more friends get the virus even while masked up and gloved up. Lastly, my son has a genetic tumor condition, and I don't know what this vaccine will do to him if he gets it, because there is no long-term data. We keep hearing, "Follow the science."
I'm sorry to interrupt.
But the science goalpost keeps changing.
Thank you for calling.
Give the parents a choice.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. State your name, the town you're from, and provide your comments.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Blondiel. Uh, can you all hear me?
We can hear you. Please continue with your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I have children enrolled in the Harton Public School System. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Thank you very much. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to advise that I do not support any teaching or implementation of critical race theory, LGBTQ, or transgender. Um, it's not the school's responsibility to, uh, teach our children that. And, uh, I, I just wanted to, to voice that concern, uh, and say that. Um, secondly, regarding, uh, all of the COVID, uh, many people have stated that, uh, we need to follow the data and listen to experts. Um, it seems to me that, uh, uh, they, uh, have chosen not to look at recent data because, um, my research and my findings are based upon data and experts. So I would like to provide you some insight. Uh, and first and foremost, it'd be medical masks. Right on the box of the mask, it says, "The masks are not effective against viruses." Now, if that's not, uh, uh, expert opinion, I don't know what is. Um, t-shirts, cloth masks, they harbor bacteria. And last year, the kids who wore masks, they were still catching colds and getting strep throat. I know because my daughter, who, uh, practices excellent hygiene, was following all of the rules and guidelines. She got strep throat, along with some, several other children. Um, regarding the PCR test, according to the CDC website, the PCR tests are no longer going to be used if they are proven unreliable due to false positives and the ability to isolate the COVID virus. It says right on there that people should stop using, and they're going to transfer over to something else. That's the CDC website. As far as the vaccines, the VAERS report, uh, they report, um, it's a professional expert website that we should, we all can, can look for. Um, they report that the COVID vaccines, adverse reactions in the last year, 545,000. The number of adverse reactions from other vaccines for the past 21 years is 811,000. COVID deaths as of 2020 to present. COVID deaths as of 2020 to present total 12,366, Compared to all other vaccines in the last 21 years, deaths total 8,858. So that is, that's an expert, you know, that's the data. This is what the experts are saying. I also used, uh, the mortality statistics straight from the Michigan.gov website. The only, uh, the only thing is they stopped reporting mortality rates after 2019, But that's okay because I think that 2019 will be very representative because, Um, at the time, there was no social distancing, no mask wearing, no, uh, no, um, Nobody had vaccines, there was, there was nothing, there was nothing in place. In 2019, when there was no, nothing, uh, to prevent anyone from the COVID, There, Michigan reported 12,477 deaths from COVID. Sixty and above, because this is right on the Michigan website, you say that, that sixty and above, there was 13,021 deaths. Twenty, aged twenty to fifty, there was 456 deaths. You're already at the total. Zero to twenty reflects zero deaths from COVID under the, so under the age of twenty. Zero deaths when there were no mask mandates, no quarantine.
Thank you, time is up. Thanks for calling in. Next caller, please.
Alina.
Hello, please state your name, the town you're from, and provide your comments. And if someone's running a YouTube stream in the background, if you could please mute that. Thank you.
Hi, Alina Anderson.
Who am I speaking with, please?
Alina Anderson.
Alina Anderson, okay, thank you for calling, please provide your comments. Where, you're from Howell, Alina?
Yep, Howell.
All right, thank you.
I am, um, an extremely proud parent of
I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, can you, we can't hear you, can you be louder?
Sure. I am a Howell parent of four school-aged children. Um, we are in Livingston County, and Howell Public Schools has been in session in person Since last year of mid-August. They started the school year with no mask mandates Until our governor and Michigan Health Department forced all of our school-aged children to wear masks. Again, um, I'm calling to express my concerns as a parent That we do not mandate all students to be wearing masks. Transmission of COVID-19 among children in schools is very rare. In fact, according to published data by the CDC, Ninety-nine percent of our children who contract COVID-19 survive. So despite this, the CDC has issued COVID-19 guidance Calling for a host of extreme mitigation measures that are harmful to schoolchildren And counterintuitive to learning. Orders throughout the pandemic have disallowed personal responsibility And eroded the constitutional rights of students and parents, Resulting in undue burden, restrictions, and irreparable harm to student education and socio-emotional development. Youth have been deprived of positive activities and once-in-a-lifetime activities. The risk of anxiety, depression, and death from suicide has increased And is a greater risk to our students than COVID-19. Sorry. Uh, these measures are harmful and unnecessary. As such, we're asking the governor and our Department of Ed To follow the lead of Florida, Texas, Iowa, and other states that have permanently lifted COVID-19 guidelines in our schools. Schools should create school policies, Not government bureaucrats with significant conflicts of interest Who are completely disconnected from the children they're making policies for. Um, I want to also leave you with this last. We do not want masks on our children. We, the parents, should have the choice. We do not want our children quarreled, to be quarantined, tested, or treated. We want constitutional freedoms returned, which the government had no right to take in the first place. Having sworn an oath to the Constitution, We ask you to remove the health mandates from our youth And allow parents and individuals to choose what is best for their own life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Your job as the Michigan State Board of Education is education, Not to make medical decisions for our children. Leave it to the personal choice of the parents. And also lastly, um, I wanted to quote what our superintendent of Howell Public Schools, He, um, shared with us. Howell Public Schools tested, 2,000 tests were administered to our student athletes, And less than 0.76 were positive. As a county, in Livingston County, Um, we, we administered 30,000 tests to our student athletes Last year with a 0.37 positive rate. Those stats should tell you that our students are not harmed by COVID-19. They are not getting COVID-19. So please stop these mandates on our children. Leave it to the parents, it is our choice, these are our kids. We should be responsible for them, not the government, not the state of Michigan. Thank you for your time, and I urge you, and I'm praying for you, Please do what is right by the children of the state of Michigan, thank you.
Thank you, next caller, please. Name and where? Hi, could you please give us your name and where you're from and provide your comments?
Hello, my name is Susan Jablonsky, and I am in Livonia, Michigan. I have been a registered nurse since 2013. In the last 17 months, we have all had ample time to research actual statistics and assess Risks for ourselves and our children. My concern lies in those who Finally follow the accepted narrative of what is being presented as non-disputed science And succumbing to confirmation bias based on the top three Google searches Without assessing the data presented by scientists and practicing physicians In the field who oppose the accepted narrative. I find it interesting that these professionals are being silenced and canceled. The fact remains that real truth should not oppose the notion of challenging opinions. It would have no need to cancel opposing viewpoints from experts because real truth has nothing to hide. I have witnessed with my own eyes grown adults drop face masks on the ground Only to crouch down, pick them up, and place them directly on their faces. I have witnessed face rags hanging out of back pockets while people sit on public chairs. This is blind faith and it is false sense of security that only the uneducated could have. The blind faith that wears face masks, yes, even filthy ones, and assume they're preventing infection. Colds, flu, and COVID-19 are all viral, and there is no cure, and there never will be. You never cared about masking for colds or flu, and you never panicked because you weren't told to. I encourage you to read the efficacy concerning masks pre-March 2020 To see for yourselves that masks do not, never have, or will Prevent transmission of viral particles included the COVID-19 virus specifically, Um, medical face masks and face rags. Um, concerning these face rags and face masks, while I expect it reasonable, Excuse me, unreasonable for the lay public to know the ins and outs of a subject technique Such as what a healthcare professional is trained to practice, I do expect a certain base level of critical thinking to still take place. And based on my own observations of adults wearing face masks, I can assure you that such critical thinking is largely impracticable. I already mentioned, um, that cloth and basic surgical masks are rendered useless, And now let's add into the equation that children are using them. Children who sweat, drool, and snot into their face masks all day, every day in school. If you truly care about health, these children would remain maskless, At least under parental guidance and supervision and what they choose for their own children, Rather than breathing in their own CO2 and acquired bacteria that festered in those masks. All this, and I don't have time to get into the unknown psychological perils that is already affecting our children. The policies you are basing on, they are counterfactual, I don't blame this one. That, I know you're not scientists, and you've done what you thought was reasonable by listening to the CDC. For every expert out there, however, telling us about transmission masks that supports what the CDC publishes, There are equal experts, equally experts, opposing this vehemently With no agenda and nothing to gain, but conversely at the peril of their own reputation. Mask wearing for our children must, and I repeat, must remain at the parent's discretion, thank you.
Next caller, please, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Caller?
Yes?
Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Melissa Broman, Battle Creek, Michigan. I'm calling to ask the board to consider no mask mandates. In fact, I think we should take it a step further and not allow any school district to mandate masks. Um, there's so much harm that this is doing to the children. It is not stopping the virus. It's never protected people or children from the spread of COVID. In fact, I strongly feel, and there is science to prove, that it actually creates more harm and creates more spread. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, yes, my name is Rakaya Gates, I'm from Wayne County.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I cannot hear you, can you?
Hi, how about, how about now?
I can hear you very well now, if you could please, uh, tell me your name and where you're from and provide your comments.
Yes, um, my name is Rakaya Gates, I'm from Wayne County. I'm calling in complete opposition of any of these protocols that have been enforced on children to attend school. Um, I've heard a lot of parents and a lot of their opinions. Um, but one thing we seem to fail to realize is that children have this thing called innate immune system. And we know that suppressing their immune system does not produce a healthy child. Constantly washing their hands, um, constantly washing their hands, covering their faces, You know, not allowing them to breathe fully In buildings that are far from being up to coal and do not have the proper ventilation. And outside while they're conducting sports or just playing on a playground. So during these times, I think we should actually just kind of scale back a little bit And kind of use more common sense and stop promoting so much fear And un-science-based, um, propaganda to our children. If parents want to do that to make themselves feel safe, they should totally feel, be able to do so. But that should be a decision based on the parent's individuality, not across the board. Because we know that what works for you may not work for me, and especially when it comes to children Because they're all so different, their learning capabilities are so different, so. I'm just calling to again, in complete opposition of any of these protocols, Any of these mask mandates, and these temperature checks and all of this. Pretty much complete nonsense, that's what's called what is, that's been forced on our children so they can grow up, So they, that's prohibiting them from having a decent childhood And just having normal childhood experiences, like talking with friends and playing sports And being in the lunchroom without looking like they're in some type of psych ward. I'm sorry, it looks crazy, it's unhealthy, And parents need to come together and say, hey, if that's your choice, that's your choice, but not for all. Thank you for your time, thank you.
Thank you, next caller, please. Name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Hello, caller?
Hello?
Yes, please give me your name, where you're from, and provide your comments, thank you.
Yes, me, early, from Sterling Heights, McComb County. In my comment as a parent, um, it's regarding the Monday. I believe in freedom of choice, and I believe that parents are equipped To decide for their kids, and that has been forever. When we have the right to do what we know is good for them. I think the Board of Education needs to, um, Allow the schools to let the kids not to, not, not to have the mandate to have the mask on. Um, and also that the parents have the right to choose. No vaccination. We, many people believe in choice unless it's the right, what they think. I think the choice is for us to choose. Parents decide if the kid should be vaccinated or not. And parents should decide if the kid had to wear a mask or not. Um, and asking the Board of Education to consider that, or you will see people Clean the school districts. Um, because it's not right for you to think that you, the school board or the schools, The local school board can control, um, well, we, we are the ones who should be handling it. We, the parents. It's proven that the kids are not getting sick. Kids who have no mask all over the summer, who live a normal life, are doing okay, are excelling, Are, um, are living a life, and we need to go back to normal. Um, and the question, as I said, is, no mandates is a choice. And those who don't feel comfortable with kids that will not wear masks, There are always options, they can do their own mind, they can do to academies, they can do whatever they want to. Um, but not to force us to do what we should not be doing. The vaccination should be a choice, not a mandate. And if these kids don't need it, and if I'm forced to vaccinate my child, Then my child is not going to that school either. Because it's not right, and I'm not going to put his house in danger Because a board, a group of people who think they know better than parents decides so. Um, the others, last comment that I want to make regarding critical race theory. Take that out of the schools, please. I'm an immigrant and I'm sick and tired of people using the race card.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Those classes should not be taught.
Thank you for calling.
Those classes should not be taught, thank you.
Thank you for calling, next caller, please. If you would state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Last comment that I want to make?
Hello?
Hello? If you are not the caller speaking, please mute. Please, okay, caller, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments, thank you. Caller?
Yep, my name is Amy Pack from Grand Rapids. And I am one of thousands of parents in Michigan, let alone across the United States, Who would like the state to ban critical race theory, Otherwise known as DEI, DEIBS, social justice, ethnic studies, Anti-racism initiatives, race equality, and anti-bias teachings in our school districts. We do not want our children to be taught that the color of your skin indicates your character. We do not want them to be taught that white people are currently the oppressors And people of color are the oppressed. We would like our children to be taught that everyone should be treated equally, no matter the color of their skin. In the Bible, Jesus treats everyone the same, no matter the color of their skin. Martin Luther King Jr. said in one of his many famous speeches, "I have a dream that my four little children with one day live in a nation Where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the contact of their character." We would like our children to be taught this as well. We also believe that teachers should only be teaching the set curriculum Without pushing any political or personal agendas. Our children should never know that the political stances of their teachers. The teachers should be focusing on presenting both sides of an issue And letting the students choose their side based on the facts. The teachers should only be teaching the set curriculum set by the Board of Education. We would like the administrators to send these expectations out in an email To all teachers and parents so that everyone knows the expectations of these administrators. Our anxiousness as parents is based on what our students have already experienced As pressures from teachers, pressures related to both the COVID shot and politics, And subsequently, our administrators reactive rather than proactive solutions. Due to this, we ask that teachers receive a letter stating a neutral stance with the COVID shot Explaining the state's expectations and teaching the curriculum without political or personal agendas Prior to the start of this year. And that each district parents receive a copy. Your willingness to write this letter and share its contents with the parents In each district will be good faith in mending the relationship between parents, administrators, and the school board. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Yes, ma'am, my name is Megan Gunnerson, I'm a resident in Washtenaw County, And I have four children in the public school system, um, in three different levels. My comment is actually directed to the board as a whole. I've watched your meeting, um, today, and then throughout the public comment segment. While stakeholders, as we've come to be called, have expressed their opinion on both sides of the fence for a variety of issues. My displeasure comes from watching you be on electronic devices during your constituents Speaking to you as representatives for them. They deserve your time and attention. Nothing on Facebook, or your cell phone, or your laptop and your iPad on the far left Are that, are much more important than listening to your constituents. With respect, goodbye.
Thank you, caller. Trying to do too many things at once here. Next caller, please, if you'd state your name, the town you're from, and provide your comments.
Yes, my name is John Hill. I'm a resident of Midland, Michigan. And I am not in support of mask mandates for children attending K through 12 public schools.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thank you for calling.
Hi, my name is Danielle and I am calling from the Brighton area. And I'm calling in today because I wanted to talk on the masks and vaccines and testing for the kids. Um, the first thing I wanted to say is, um, I am, I used to be a N-95 fit tester at one of the local hospital, hospitals in the area. And when someone is wearing it, five, you have to be fit tested for it, meaning you have to have your size right. You have to have it put on right. There's a specific way to put it on. And that is the only way to protect you from any type of viral particles. So if you are not wearing it properly, you have not been fit tested for it. You've not gotten the right size, you're not wearing it right. Therefore, you're not protecting yourself at all. So there's that. The other thing is, wearing a standard mask is not going to protect you from viral particulate. That's not what it's created for. The COVID, the, um, I'm sorry, the virus particulate, they're measured in microns, which is a zero point one two five size micron. Those masks are not going to stop that. They don't stop it. Neither do the cloth masks, um, which I think is a joke in its entirety. Um, they, they do nothing. Those masks don't even fully stop large, uh, droplets. So it's one of the arguments is that the large droplets, the viral particulate attaches itself to the large droplets, which in, in, in theory, yes, they do. But if you've ever squirted a bottle of hairspray and you see the droplets and, and things coming out, um, a lot of the small ones you don't even see, okay? So even if they are attaching themselves to large droplets, um, most of them are tiny micron sized particulate that no one sees and it still gets out. Okay? The other thing I wanted to mention is that the COVID-19, um, virus has not even been isolated. Um, they found this out in Alberta, uh, Alberta, Canada. This is big news out there. If a virus has not been isolated, how are you able to test for it? Uh, the PCR tests are created by a man named Kerry Mullis. And Kerry Mullis created that test, not to be a diagnostic test, but to be a test to show what type of particulate, what type of virus that you have inside of your body. The coronavirus itself is the same family as SARS and the flu. They're all the same type of a family. So when you're PCR testing somebody, you're finding out that they have that type of virus in them already. Yes.
Thank you for your comments.
Is it active?
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Next person, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, Mama Carradico from Macomb Township. Um, I just wanted to let you know that thank you for listening to my comment today. I am the chapter chair for an organization called Moms for Liberty in Macomb County. This organization has chapters all over the United States. Today I'm calling to represent the 1,400 parents, grandparents, and community members in the Macomb County area. Our focus is on parental rights. We are asking that masking and other COVID protocols be left to the decisions of the parents and not the school or the state. Allowing parents the choice is the only way to make this school year successful. There are about fifteen, fifteen thousand students in our district. The superintendent and the board members do not know the needs of each of those students, but the parents do. Allowing the parents the choice when it comes to their children is the only way. We know our children best. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Rachel Barton. I'm from Niles, Michigan. Um, I want to say thanks for taking these public comments. I'm calling to say no to bringing back universal mask mandates. The efficacy of masks has only been proven in clinical settings with perfect usage, which young children are incapable of. Virtual is an option for those who are fearful of their children sharing air with other free breathing human beings. Nobody knows better than a parent what is best for their child. Masks personally caused me headaches, nosebleeds, and anxiety, yet I comply in order to keep my job and provide for my family. I will not subject my child to the same. If you trot out these mask mandates again, I will instantly disenroll her from public school, which is a shame because she's an only child and I want nothing more than for her to be around other children her own age. But I stand behind my principles, especially when it comes to my child. My family is prepared to leave the state over this. I think masks optional would be a fantastic compromise, but please stop stripping people's options. The goalposts have been moved too many times and it has no end in sight until you put an end to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling in. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thank you for calling.
Catherine from Port Huron. I'm calling today to express my opposition to the teaching of critical race theory. Um, my opposition to mask mandates and especially my opposition to the COVID shot mandate at our universities. Um, my daughter, I haven't been a single mom for nineteen years and my daughter has worked very hard since she was thirteen years old with the dream of attending college. And two weeks prior to move in, she has put in a position where she's being forced to make a decision that should not be forced upon her. She has the right to choose what goes on with her body. If she were to become unexpectedly pregnant and want to have abortion, she would be told her body, her choice. And as far as the COVID shot goes, she should be told the same thing. Her body, her choice. Nobody should be forcing her to do this just so that she could educate herself and have her dreams come true, what she has worked so very hard for. Um, please do not allow this to happen. Let our children get their education without having to be forced into this impossible situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Hi, um, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. If you'd please state your name and where you're from and provide your comments, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Kristin Megan Kelly. I live in Ottawa County inside Hudsonville, Michigan. Um, I first want to say I'm probably the first subject matter expert to actually call in here to speak on masks and how absolutely useless they are. So as somebody who has been in this profession for almost twenty years and I worked for the federal government for twelve, nine years on active duty, I am absolutely appalled at the fact. No state official has instituted the hierarchy of control. If we were doing our jobs and we were actually following the science, we would be imploring schools to implement destruction and dilution technologies within the schools. Now, there are a lot of schools in the state that are guilty of fraud, waste, and abuse because they are utilizing these federal COVID funds for things that are not for risk mitigation. So I ask of all of you to do a simple search of the hierarchy of controls and tell me why, not now, maybe in a press conference, why nobody has followed those hierarchy of controls. Because you will not find one randomized control trial that says masks made off Etsy from Grandma's curtains, off of eBay, you name it. They have zero percent efficacy against aerosols. How do I know this? Because I'm actually a court approved subject matter expert. I've traveled around the country testifying in front of legislators to overturn their mask mandates and I've done so in three states with some of my colleagues. This is not political for me. Health and safety is my job. And the ethics of my profession can no longer allow me to turn a blind eye to all of these political figures committing actual legal violations. Because if I ever put people in masks without conducting a health risk assessment, without them being nayosh rated, without medical clearances and fit tests and knowing their medical history, I could actually be fined and go to jail. So please tell me how you all sitting there are not in handcuffs. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Next caller, please state your name and where you're from and provide your comments.
Yes, Mindy Cox. I'm from Midland, Michigan. Um, I'm calling today to try and encourage our schools, state school board to please not enforce any mandates on our kids. I feel like they need to have a normal year after last year. The science that has come out proved that the masks are not effective. Um, I've been a registered nurse for sixteen years and I can tell you firsthand that these cloth and fabric masks do nothing to prevent the transmission of COVID. Um, COVID has actually never been isolated. Um, there's multiple studies and I would be happy to provide further studies to the state school board proving that fact. Um, these kids need to get back to normal and it's the state school board's job to make sure that that happens, that they can have a normal, good year to not have these coercive restrictions. The weekly PCR testing of our student athletes in middle school and high school needs to stop. Um, the PCR testing has already been recalled. Um, however, they're still using it, even though it's been recalled, the CDC has said they will still use that method of testing until the end of December. Um, they have already proven and the CDC themselves have come out and said that the PCR testing cannot differentiate between COVID, the flu, or any other cold SARS virus. So why we're, why we are mandating our children, teenagers, to do this is absolutely insane and ridiculous. The vaccines are still under an EUA, an emergency use authorization. They have not been fully approved. There are multiple studies coming out that show there's a high likelihood of myocarditis in these kids, especially teenage boys. Um, we need to not encourage and mandate these vaccines. The studies need to fully come out. We need to have all the science out before we're encouraging our school kids to get these vaccines. Um, I have many concerns, but I'm happy to provide, like I said, um, the scientific data behind my statements today. Um, you can give me a call back at eight zero one three six zero five two nine nine. I would be happy to provide all of the medical studies, some even done by the CDC and NIH that are not being open and transparent with the American people or the world at this time. Um, but yes, I would please appreciate my voice to be heard. Our kids need to get back to normal, um, especially for a virus that has a ninety-nine point nine nine seven success, you know, rate. These kids are not at risk. Um, segregation on a playground is ridiculous. If we're not going to enforce masks in the classroom, there's no reason why they should be enforcing social distancing.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time has expired. Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Hi, this is Kristin Scott. Can you hear me?
I can. Kristin, where are you from?
Hi, I live in Grand Blanc. I, um, two things. I have a daughter with special needs who has autism and she is mask exempt. She attended school all last year without a mask and she did great. But when her teachers and staff and speech therapists are masked, she cannot understand them. She cannot hear them. We are working on non-verbal communication. That's very important with autism. And we can't get that when her instructors are masked. Um, our local school districts have said they're not going to require them and I urge you and implore you to allow the local school districts to have that decision. My final comment is, all of us adults can go to bars till two AM, drink shoulder to shoulder with people regardless of vaccination status. We can go to concerts and parties as long as we want. We don't have to wear masks. You have casinos and people smoking, but you're telling me that my child, when seated at a desk, has to learn, to learn, has to wear and has to social distance with their peers? It just makes no sense. So if you're going to mandate masks for kids, then I want to see every single one of you wearing a mask everywhere you go, even in your home when strangers or friends come to visit. Because it's just a double standard. It's not fair to our kids and it's harming their mental health. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Next caller, please.
People smoking, but you're telling me that my child, when seated at a desk-
If someone's got the YouTube on in the background, please mute it.
It just makes no sense. So if you're going to mandate masks for kids, then I want to see-
If someone could please mute the video stream, that'd be great. Next caller, please. State your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Jessica Hamlin. I am calling from Howell, Michigan. Um, I am calling to just bring awareness to how many parents are calling in today. And I want to remind you that it is the parents that you, that should be choosing what happens to their children. And you're getting an overwhelming response to that. And I, um, I truly hope that you take that into consideration and that you do, um, listen to the parents and allow, um, everything that happens in school to be, um, through the freedom, not force. Um, if you choose not to, parents, you can take a stand. You are not stuck in this system of feeling hopeless to the decisions of your own offspring. You can choose freedom over force. There are plenty of wonderful programs, um, that are mentoring parents about homeschooling. Um, you do not have to wait or you can see what your schools decide if they do decide to go back to any mandate. Um, I want to also bring awareness to the fact that children with exemptions um, do get ostracized, get discriminated against. And that is because there is a push for, um, what people feel that their personal beliefs are that they can push onto our children. And that goes, um, you know, even on the political agenda with the curriculums that they try to push. Um, parents, again, you can take the power back of raising your own children with your fundamental doctrine, beliefs, and tradition. Do not feel like you can't, do not feel like there's not hope. Um, I do hope that the, the school boards do make the right decision and the decision that they're supposed to be using is through the parents. Um, if you cannot, you can find another job. You do not, you are not forced to work for the school boards. Um, and, and we will be glad to fill those places with people who are going to take a stand for the children of our state. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, the city you're from, and provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Reina Vendramini. I'm from Livonia, Michigan and I am here to speak in favor of parental choice and against all mandates for vaccines, for masks, for contact tracing, quarantine, all of it. Um, we are, as parents, we are tired of having to fight our own school boards, our own state, and the teachers' unions to do what we know is right for our children. And quite honestly, the studies all speak for themselves, but we do not need any studies to tell us that it is not healthy for our children to wear masks all day in school. We do not need studies to know that our children should not feel pressured to take a vaccine that only has experimental authorization approval and that has not been thoroughly tested and reports of severe side effects are common. Um, we do not need to be told to keep our children home when they are healthy, when we've already had a year of contact tracing and have learned that out of all, for example, athletes and students that were told to stay home, that only about point two percent of those students actually became positive, which might be two or three students in a district. So give the parents the choice to make the decisions for their children. Your job is to support the parents and not to take our jobs away. And I really like that phrase, "I will not co-parent with the government." Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Next caller. Hello? If you could please state your name, the town you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, this is Anupam. I'm from Oakland County and I'm calling in support for requiring universal masking in schools. As we can see, um, all the data, the numbers of COVID cases have been increasing rapidly in the country. Cases are rising faster in southern states where the vaccination numbers are low, but they are starting to increase in Michigan as well. The presence of this new Delta variant has definitely changed how we have been dealing with COVID in the past. Many of the schools feel comfortable, given their past experience in summer, that they can manage without, uh, having a universal mask policy. But the numbers in summer were very low and now they have rapidly increased. Another thing we need to look at is the CDC, MDHHS, various county health departments. They have much more education, experience and research compared to any one of us who will be able to do a better job researching on Google or finding out other, our own resources to make that judgment call. If these experts are advising us to follow universal masking, there is a reason for that. They don't have a secret agenda where they are trying to hurt our kids. With respect to children, uh, while most people say, oh, they have a low mortality rate, the hospitalization rate is increasing, ICU bed utilization is increasing, and these are significant events for a child. Uh, now we know that even vaccinated individuals can spread the infection to others. They may not be getting sick, uh, as much as an unvaccinated individual, but they are still able to spread infection. What many people miss is the role of a mask is not to just prevent you from getting infection, but with universal masking, it decreases the amount of virus being disseminated by a possibly asymptomatic individual and that protects everyone in the community. Unfortunately, we cannot rely on people making the right choice or letting people decide because this is similar to allowing a parent to decide that it's okay for their child to smoke a cigarette in a classroom. It's going to affect everyone else. When it's public health, unfortunately, it cannot be everyone chooses what they want to do, but we need to listen to and respect expert opinion and follow the CDC guidelines for universal masking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hello, my name is Andrea Moody-Raj and I live in Gross Point Farms, Michigan. I'm calling in support of making mask mandates and any safety mitigations that help prevent the spread of COVID. Uh, right now, we are living in a city where they are providing zero safety measures and we are afraid to send our five-year-old, who is a rising kindergartner, into schools and are having to look outside of our district for options. Uh, unfortunately, we have a lot of people in our area that are immunocompromised and I have a neighbor right across the street who has three young children, all under the age of five, who's battling breast cancer right now. She just underwent a double mastectomy and if she got COVID in her house, it could kill her. I have so many friends who are so concerned and unfortunately, the loudest voices are the anti-maskers and the anti-vaccinators, but that's what's providing safety within our community. My comments are, please help us make mask mandates in place so our children can go to school safely and so that we don't have to worry every time our child leaves the door that there's a potential that they could receive COVID and they could die or be hospitalized or be somehow affected for the rest of their lives and it would compromise their growth and their life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi there.
Hi, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Thank you. Yeah, this is John Wetzke. I am from Charlotte, Michigan, Charlotte Post Schools.
Please comment.
Yeah, thank you. Our comment would be, or my comment for our two children that go to school, would definitely be that we don't really see the need for a mask. Um, if the vaccines are working so well and over a certain percentage, like our governor stated, that our state is vaccinated, then why are we concerned about our children at all, period, wearing a mask? It also feels like discrimination for kids that aren't and they're going to get bullied, they're going to get picked on, they're going to pointed out. It's just totally wrong against my principles and how I feel that kids and even adults should be taken care of in a democracy world, but I really appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Next caller, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hey, it's William Pollard. I'm from Zeeland, Michigan. And my comment is that I do not agree with any type of forced vaccinating of kids or mask mandates, even on the school bus.
Thank you, sir. Next caller-
Thank you.
Next person, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Hello, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments.
Oh, you, you still have me, Bill Pollard, William Pollard.
Okay, I thought you were done. Were you done?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Natalie Hill. I live in Midland, Michigan. I have three children, uh, seventh and two junior high level and I just wanted to, um, express my opinion that I am not in favor of, um, any type of mandates in K through twelve for masks, vaccinations and/or athletic COVID testing.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Thank you.
Next caller, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Audrey Rogers. I'm from Livonia and I'm commenting to, um, bring awareness also to the fact that many, many parents want to choose the right for their children to breathe freely. I personally have experienced with my children damaging effects of masks from last year. My middle school daughter, who was very healthy, lost her vision for over twenty minutes due to breathing the air behind a mask. It's extremely dangerous and I consider this child abuse. So I'm personally asking for us to be heard as parents and for the right to choose as parents. It is our right and it is our fundamental right to care for our children. Thank you.
Thanks for calling. Next caller, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Hello? Next caller, please. Please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can now. Please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments.
My name is Jacqueline Pike. I'm calling from Livingston County. I would just like to say thank you for having us on and also would like to echo the thoughts of the numerous parents that have called in in support of lifting the mask mandates for these schools. We are not saying that we want anyone to not have the choice if you would like to wear the mask. That is absolutely your choice. If you would like to take the vaccine, absolutely your choice, but to try and force healthy individuals that would not like the vaccine or maybe not a good candidate for it to have to mask in order to attend a public school, that they would get counted as truant for not attending, that is just absurd in my mind. My son has an IEP. He was in kindergarten last year and he thrives on routine. We have a set schedule in our home, Velcro routine every day in order for him to thrive and if he is off of that schedule, it is just hell or high water in our household. For him to, thankfully, virtual is an option, but for him to have been in school and then telling me, even when he was not in school, we were getting letters that he could have been in contact with somebody, he had to quarantine, and then them telling me that I had to keep him in a separate room in our home for two weeks. And then they took it a step further to tell me that MDA, MDHHS was going to come to our home to verify that we were quarantining our then-six-year-old child with special needs in a room was beyond anything that I had ever heard. And to tell us that we are ignoring science or cherry-picking data off of Google is a slap in the face to every doctor, every nurse that has worked on the front lines, that has studied this, to all of the people that this is their specific field of study, that they do this every single day, this is their job. This is what they went to school for. That know that the masks do not work, they're ineffective, they cause more harm than good. They are hurting our children, they are hurting people. To tell us that we have looked on Google and that's just not enough data is a slap in the face to every one of those people. So yes, I am for lifting the mask mandate. You should have the choice to wear a mask if you want to, but to create an atmosphere where children have to wear a mask and if they don't wear one, they're going to be bullied, they're going to be ostracized, they're going to be coerced by their teachers, by their peers for not doing that and bringing them up in that atmosphere. Are we going to start putting stars on them next? Are we going to start slapping numbers on their wrists? That's just unheard of. This is America and this is Michigan and we're still allowing this to happen.
Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
They don't wear ones, they're going to be bullied, they're going to be ostracized.
Someone has YouTube on in the back, if you could please mute it. Next caller, please. Name, where you're from, provide your comments. Is there another caller on the line?
Yep. Hello, this is Danielle Bartos. I'm from Ortonville, Michigan.
Please provide your comments.
Hello.
Go ahead.
I am completely against the mask mandates and I'm completely against mandatory testing and I'm completely against any schools pushing or trying to coerce children into getting the vaccine. There is a British Medical Journal study that tests the N95 mask versus the cloth mask. And during that study, they found that the cloth masks are virtually, do nothing. So the point that we're telling all these kids to wear masks and they're wearing these cloth masks is absolutely ridiculous. Now, the N95 masks do help somewhat, but it's not enough for these kids to be wearing them, especially all day long. It also affects their emotional recognition. It, it's going to affect their trust. They attribute trust to facial posing and expression and all the emotional expressions that they see, the fear, the sadness, the happiness. All of this is expressed and if you're wearing the mask, this, the entire mouth region is completely covered. So that is completely going to affect these children emotionally and their trust, which you're supposed to have trust with your teachers. Now, when these kids are wearing these cloth masks every day, they are not washing them. No one's taking these masks home and washing them. No one has proper PPE training. Nobody knows how they're supposed to wear it. We have not seen one, one person come out publicly telling us how to wear these masks properly. No one's telling us to wash them every single night. No one's telling us to change our masks daily. No one's telling us that the N95 mask works better, but every time you leave a room, you should be taking it off because otherwise you're cross-contaminating. Now, these masks actually are being filled with different infections. When these masks are studied, they're found to have all of this disgusting bacteria on them. Now, if these kids are touching their masks and then touching the tables and then touching their friends and then touching, then putting their masks on the table at home, they're literally spreading it farther and wider than they would if we just instigated it, like, you know, initiated more hand washing. You know, proper hand washing is even better method than these masks. I am a hundred percent against it. I know ninety percent of the parents that I talk to are a hundred percent against it. Us parents should have a choice. We should be the ones who make every single decision for our children. You guys do not get to make decisions for our children, especially when it comes to something like their health. If I decide to feed my kid McDonald's every single day, that's my choice. If I decide to give my kid nutritional valued foods every single day, that's my choice. Now, you guys do not get to pick if we get, if our kids have to wear a mask this year. We put up with it last year, but I'm telling you, parents will not put up with it, with it this year. Your jobs are at risk and you guys should really make the decision based on what all of these other parents are saying. Everyone who has called in for masks has had some kind of issue where they're some, they're just filled with so much fear. Stay home. Stay home. Most schools are offering virtual-
Thank you for calling. The time is up.
You're welcome.
Next caller, please. Name, where you're from, and your comments, please. Hello, is there a caller on the line? Caller, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Okay, if, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. One last chance. Is there a caller on that line? Okay, thank you. We're moving along to the next caller. Next caller.
Hello?
Hi, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Thank you for calling.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Derubis and I live in Gross Point Woods. And I just wanted to call and voice my support for a mask mandate. And honestly, I think it would be very helpful, um, if there were some way that the state could set a, some kind of standard, a minimum basis for risk mitigation strategies. Um, some districts are not having mask policies. Um, some districts are also not offering virtual options and it leaves families with students that are immunocompromised or have immunocompromised family members, um, in a really difficult position where they have to choose between a safe education for their child, which they can't receive in their current district, um, or risking the health of their family. And it's just, um, unconscionable, honestly. Um, districts like my own are, in Gross Point Public Schools, are trying to have a quote "normal" school year and basically pretend that COVID, COVID doesn't exist. In the elementary level, a hundred percent of our students are unvaccinated. They don't even have the option or the choice to vaccinate if they want to help protect themselves. Um, there are not many other, there's no, there's no place to social distance. Um, and we already saw last year that we had outbreaks in the elementary level, um, even with mask wearing. Um, not to say that masks don't help, but it's still possible to spread it even with wet masks. So removing that layer of protection at all, um, really just leaves you in a lurch. Um, you know, it's interesting to listen to these parents and even some district-level school board members that want to delude themselves to believing they know better than experts who have dedicated their education and careers to public health and safety. Um, when a district defies CDC recommendations and, and from organizations that have come to a consensus about basic risk mitigation strategies, it really sends a message, a message that contradicts the importance and value of science education and, uh, honestly, a lack of commitment to truth, in fact. Um, please, please keep in mind that not every student is in the same boat, but we all deserve to have a safe environment to learn in for our children. Um, please, please consider, um, setting some kind of standard for basic minimum safety and risk mitigation strategies. Um, we, we need help. It's not fair for my child. He did virtual last year. It's not the most ideal situation, but that's not even an option anymore. So we're really in a bind. Um, and as far as CRT goes, I wish people would stop with the fake outrage. Everyone knows it's not taught in the school levels here in public education. And if you truly don't believe that, uh, racial equity and inclusion matters, that's a whole nother issue. It should be a committed, ongoing, continuous practice. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Next caller. Is there a new person on the line that wants to make a public comment?
Hi, yes.
If you could give us your name, where you're from, and make your comment, that would be great.
Emily Bowman from Westland. And I want to encourage this board to do the right thing. I know it's not easy. I know it takes, it does take courage and it takes the ability to say, I have the integrity to know that parents do have the right to say things for their children. It's not an easy, the popular vote right now is that you do whatever the political people say, you do whatever the mainstream media says. It's not popular to actually stand up and be a voice of the people that you're hearing from. I don't know if any of you have heard of something called the Doctrine of the Lesser Magistrate, but this is your opportunity. So you have heard more people. You are hearing from people speaking clearly that it is the parent's right to determine how their children are educated and what situation, how they handle their health. It is not the government's right to step in and do this. And you guys have such an amazing, incredible opportunity right now to stand up and be strong, be courageous, show your integrity. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. The next caller, please. Please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Caller?
Yes.
Please give us your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Okay, this is Beth Monroe. I'm from Charlotte, Michigan. I have four school-aged children, and I work in a school here in my community. And my comments are that I do not think that masks should be required for children, nor vaccines, especially an experimental one. Last year, I saw some pretty awful things with masks with kids in school. They caused a lot of anxiety, they are totally unsanitary, they were disgusting, they would suck on them, they would throw them on the ground when they went out to recess, they would wear the same one multiple days in a row. There was no way that we could make sure they were wearing clean masks or keeping them safe. They would lose their mask, they would, I mean, it was, it was a mess. So, I mean, there was that, that, plus, I'm a library teacher, so I had to figure out how to let kids choose books that they couldn't touch. That was interesting. We figured out a way, but it was a very challenging situation, and it was completely unnecessary because COVID has very little effect on young children. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
So, just to jump in, so it's now 3 o'clock, we have 10 people in the queue. We are recommending we'll take these 10, but we're not going to accept additional ones into the queue. Anyone who wants to provide additional comments, please do so in writing. You can find the email address on our website, correct, Marilyn?
Yes.
I don't think you can do that, based on our bylaws. It specifically says you can't do that.
Well, we provide a public comment period.
You guys have hoped a, a, a sleeping bear who is, is pretty upset.
Actually, we didn't, you did.
Well, no, you, you guys, you guys want the mandate, so, you know, I mean.
It was not on the agenda.
Curious, and they want to be heard. You're going to shut up our parents?
You added it.
Go ahead.
This is public comment. Public comment starts at 1 o'clock, and people are supposed to have, be available at that time. This is the people of the state of Michigan.
Silence the parents, I guess.
Want to speak before the State Board of Education that provides for their education, and you are cutting them off. I'm not cutting them off, there's nobody else in the queue right now. This is everybody who emailed us all summer long. Hundreds of emails I sent back. I responded to them. This was not, this has nothing to do with resolutions. This has to do with parents who want access to their education. There were 10, there's 10 people in the queue. I would not cut them off. I don't think that's a smart decision.
What we're saying now.
The 10 people in the queue should speak.
From now on, our public comment period is whenever you want to call in. There's now 11, and if there's 13, 14, why aren't you willing to hear them? We are hearing them.
We want, we want to get all of their comments, but we also want to be able to finish the meeting as well.
We have sat here for so many meetings, listening to so many people come here. We have never cut them off in the time they've sat on this board. But now that it's not in support of what you want to do, you want to cut them off? You don't want to hear them? That's wrong. It's wrong. That's not what we're saying. If we sit here till 9:00 PM, listen to them. Okay. From now on, what I'm saying is we have a public comment period, right? And so, if you want to come speak, like these folks did here, they came at 1 o'clock, because that's when our public comment period is, and they had the opportunity to speak. The public comment period is the public comment period. It doesn't mean throughout the entire board meeting, you can come whenever you want and speak. There's a time for public comment. They've been given instructions through Marilyn how to contact and get in the lobby. The people who pre-registered have, but I don't know how everybody else is getting these instructions. I think people are just sharing it. Does that really matter to them, and should it really?
Can we continue public comment with the ones that we have?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, will you please let the next caller in? Caller, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Hello?
Hello?
Hi, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
My name is Andrea Graber. I'm from Highland, Michigan, here on Valley School. I just wanted to say that I would like there to be masks, no mandates, no testing. Please give parents a choice, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please provide your name, where you're calling from, and your comments. Thank you for calling. Next caller? Name where you're calling from and your comments, please. If you are speaking, I cannot hear you.
Hello?
Yes. Can you raise your volume a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments.
Good afternoon, my name is Ann, and I'm an Oakland County parent. I wanted to call today to ask this board to please support the requirement for universal masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors, regardless of their vaccination status. I'm, I implore our state government and health authorities to take a stand, to do the hard but right thing, and to communicate a requirement for universal masking. As a clear demonstration of this, superintendents of our local school districts are stating that their districts will not require masks without a mandate like this. Please, we need your help. Currently, unless families are unable, unless families are able to find a private school mandating masks, we do not have a safe, in-person option for our under 12 children who are not yet eligible for vaccination. While districts do provide, provide virtual options for a number of reasons, this is not always a realistic option for so many families. We know that masking has proven to help spread, to help decrease the spread of COVID-19. Masks are safe. Masks do not harm children nor adults. For the American Academy of Pediatrics, they do not inhibit breathing, they do not negatively impact lung development, and they do not increase the intake of carbon dioxide. Keeping students in school is our highest priority this year. If this is the case, how can we accomplish that at its best if our students and staff are not universally masking? Are students and/or staff who are not masking going to be testing frequently? This would be costly and difficult to track and administer. Without either of these mitigating measures, it is without question that there will be higher case rates amongst our school communities, which will also result in greater numbers of students and staff having to quarantine. Please help support our families, please help support our communities, please help support our districts who, in many cases, want to do the right thing, but are, but feel unable to do so. In closing, I look again for this board to help follow the science, to require universal masking as it makes decisions that best support the safety and wellness of the students and our staff in the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please provide your name and where you're from and your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Ann Schreier. I'm from Jensen, Michigan, and I have a hearing impaired son who wears hearing aids, and also, he needs to read lips to help him communicate. And I had to, I had to pull him out of school last year and homeschool him. I knew it would have been a complete waste of time. And since in that year, he got video speech therapy from the school, which was a complete joke. He didn't learn anything. His speech did not improve. He has not been getting the resources that he is entitled to. I myself have completely lost faith in the public school system. I believe that masks should 100% be the parent's choice, and I believe in, I believe that forced masking is child abuse. So, that's really all I had to say.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Next caller, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thanks for calling.
I'm Olga, I'm from Caledonia, and I'm just calling to, that I am against the COVID mandates. No one needs to be forced to wear a mask, or get tested, or get a vaccine. Last I checked, we still live in America.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. State your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thank you for calling.
Okay, my name is Rosario. I'm calling from Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I share that schools need to be open for the students. The students need to be in the school and learning the right and correct teaching from the teachers. The mask cannot provide them good health. The mask is going to against the good health, it's going to bring no good health. It's a lie. We already know that. Teachers need to teach what the children need to learn. No doctrine aid, the wrong lies, and this twisted word is ready for the children's. No pornography, no gender, no doctrine aid, Black Lives Matter. They need to learn what they need to learn, count. They need to learn addition, subtraction, division, multiplication. They need to read, they need to write, they need to learn values. Please, fight the good fight for the children, they are the future. Stop the lies, please. God bless you. Thank you, bye.
Next caller, please.
Hi.
Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thank you.
My name is Jalen Edwards, and I'm from Hudsonville, Michigan. I do want to start off by saying the gentleman who was earlier.
We can barely hear you, ma'am.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Jalen Edwards, and I'm from Hudsonville, Michigan. I do want to start off by saying the gentleman, like a few callers earlier, that was trying to cut off people commenting, I just want to say, sir, in the most respectful way possible, people like you are the people who made my junior year of high school, high school completely miserable. I'm going into my senior year with my GPA dropped .1. And to you guys, it may not seem a lot, it may not seem like a lot, but to me, someone who cares more about my academics than experiences, people trying to mandate the vaccine and mask for people like me, someone who's never been vaccinated my entire life, who has a medical exemption for anxiety and claustrophobia, it was absolutely horrid for me. So, I understand that there's people who fear COVID. Not going to get into the science because I don't know much about it, and not going to make myself sound stupid. But for people like me who can't put up with it, I genuinely do not care what someone does, if they get vaccinated or not, but for me, I, I'm not going to. And I'm not going to let that ruin my experience. And I'm not talking about going to football games or seeing my friends. I mean, getting into a college, being proud of myself for getting good grades, being able to just like be happy and not isolated in my house like I was for over a year because of people who are, who are so afraid of COVID. I understand that people live in fear, but to me, it's ridiculous. I'm not, I'm not going to let that ruin it. It's, to me, it's dumb, and I'm sorry that goes against you guys' morals and ethics. These are mine, and I'm so glad that you guys are taking the time to hear my side of it, coming from a student. But to all the people who are out there, not just silencing themselves and standing up for what is right, I respect you. I respect you so much because you take so much guts and not just sit on the sideline and be another bystander, and just go with the flow, because guess what? It's not cool. It's not cool to just follow what everyone else is doing. It's not cool anymore. Stand up for your rights and stand up for what you believe in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Joyce Wagner. I'm from Gross Point Farms, Michigan, and I am calling because our district is not doing a mask mandate, and we need one. Like, this is, we have a very, very strong variant coming through, and it's one piece of fabric that's worn by everyone, and it's an added layer of safety for all. They may be slightly uncomfortable from time to time, but kids can do this. My two-year-old and my seven-year-old can do it without any issue, and it provides education and safety for all without having parents, having parents choose one or the other. To make it optional is, we're going to end up in a fourth wave, a fifth wave, and we'll never get out of this. So, let's just do what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Next caller, please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Sherri LaFrance. I'm from Rochester Hills, and I am just commenting on the fact that I do not want to see there be a mask or vaccine mandate in our public school systems in Rochester Hills.
Thank you for calling.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I just want to say that the law actually that governs the granting of emergency use authorizations is a federal Food and Drug and Cosmetic Act, and the law specifically states that individuals who, whom the product is worn is, has the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. The federal government does not have the right to step in and allow masks to be worn in public places, nor does the state. The state does not have the authority to overstep the federal guideline of your medical choice to wear a mask or not.
Thank you for calling.
Okay, thank you.
Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hello?
Hi. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
My name is Sarah Story. I am from the Grand Rapids, Michigan area, and I'm just calling to say that I'm in opposition to mask, vaccine, and testing mandates. The PCR test cannot differentiate between COVID and influenza. We knew the flu didn't just disappear last year. How many people actually had COVID versus the flu? We want to know if MDHHS will actually go back and update the numbers, the actual numbers. I can state for my own family, my son went through a ton of anxiety, not knowing whether or not he could play his sports and not knowing if he would let his team down if he was to test positive. Masks are not effective, they do not provide protection from smaller airborne particles. Masks don't have standards like N95, they're not properly fitted and not sealed. They're disgusting, can cause breathing problems, asthma, and headaches. I would also like to say I do not want shot mandates. There's no long or short-term studies on this, it is not approved by the FDA. Children are not spreaders, and vaccinated people can still get it and spread it. Most people have already had COVID, they have the antibodies, and we're also concerned about myocarditis. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Thanks for calling.
Yes, my name is Claire Perko, and I'm from Farmington, Michigan. And I would just like to say that I think that we need to be proactive here and not reactive. I need, think we need to provide a mask mandate for our schools. I'm in Oakland County, and we're now in a substantial transmission area and climbing, and we need to follow the science and implement the mandatory masking for schools given the recommendations made by the CDC, MDHHS, and AAP. Those groups have the students' health in mind as their top priority, and that should be the school board's top priority, too. We need to protect our children from unnecessary illness in any reasonable way that we can. Masks are a proven way to protect others from catching COVID when used universally. Our universities agree, and are following the science. So, why not try and protect our youngest population as well? So why not try and protect our youngest population as well? Thank you for all you're doing, and I really appreciate it. Thanks for listening to all of us today.
Thank you. Next person, please. Please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Somebody has their YouTube on in the back. If you could please mute it? Great, thank you.
I apologize.
That's fine. Give me your name and where you're from and provide your comments, if you would.
My name is Sarah Mae Stewart. I'm from Whitelake in Oakland County, um, and here on Bailey School. My daughter is in the special education program. She has schizophrenia, hydrocephalus, and cerebral palsy in the past, since last, what, March? She's been being schooled through virtual education. And being in special education, she has gotten about two hours of instruction a week. We cannot go through this again. This is her senior year. And she is going to be forced to miss it again and zero education again. And this is all because people are refusing to wear masks, which have been shown to help protect our kids and to protect our most vulnerable. My daughter is vaccinated, but there's a problem with that. A cold will put her in the hospital with pneumonia. So while vaccinated people are testing positive now with Delta, she could still get pneumonia from just the sniffles. And, um, our, our students are, are given, are supposed to be receiving a free and appropriate education. And yet, we're completely forgetting about the kids that have special needs and disabilities in this whole thing, and we're just brushing them aside and putting them on virtual education, which is nothing like what they need. It's not following their IEPs. It's not following their 5-0 or plans. And I would just really, I request that we mandate masks and protect our kids so that my daughter does not have to miss her senior year.
Thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Next caller, please. Provide your name, where you're from, and your comments.
Hi, my name is Tina Sternberg, and I live in the western Michigan area. I am a teacher and a parent of three students who all go to school in this area. Um, I just wanted to give you a point of view from a teacher. Um, I, uh, I teach in a public school, and I will say keeping masks on kids is a daily nightmare. Uh, they end up on the floor. They end up in death. They end up, uh, getting covered in other germs, um, on the playground. It's, it's really become a second part of my job, um, and I don't really like it. Uh, also, uh, many of us in the teaching profession are already vaccinated. So we don't feel that the board needs to come in with a mandate, because that's really a personal choice. Um, I will speak from my parent point of view. Uh, I don't want masks on my own children at school. I want them to be able to live freely in their school and to talk freely and be able to hear others clearly. Um, we know, Senator Rand Paul today announced that, uh, there was, there was a, a study that came out that said that cloth masks don't do anything. They don't prevent any form of transmission from COVID. So why would we cover our children in cloth masks? Because that's what many of them are going to come to school in. They're going to come to school with cloth masks, the cute ones that they see at the store, when they don't do anything. What is the point if they don't do anything? Um, so I'd like to thank you, uh, for taking the time to hear me from a teacher's point of view, and I hope you guys make the right choice today. Thank you.
Next caller, please. Please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Hello, please provide your name, where you're from, and your comments. Thanks for calling. One more chance. If you are speaking, I can't hear you, so maybe you're muted. But if you can provide your name, where you're from, and your comments, that would be great. Next caller, please. Mike, can you give me the next caller, please?
Hello?
Hi, can you give me your name, where you're from, and provide your comments? Thanks for calling.
Yep, Jennifer from Grand Rapids, and I just want to say that I'm opposed to the mask mandate and the vaccine mandate.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Next caller, give me your name, where you're from, and your comments. Thanks for calling.
Yes, my name is Becky, and I'm from Chiauasi County. Last year, we pulled our 11-year-old son from public school simply because of the mandates, not because we were afraid of catching COVID in the schools. As a licensed funeral director, I have worn PPE for years. I've sat here today and watched your meeting, and all of those people sitting at the table with their mask on have touched their face numerous times. Having been trained in PPE, do you realize every time you touch your mask, you are supposed to take that mask off and put on a brand-new one? What I can also tell you as a licensed funeral director is the fact that suicides and drug overdoses are way worse than COVID in our young people. I can tell you, my son is 11 years old, and the hardest thing, and when I decided to get off the bench and into the field, was when I had to care for an 11-year-old who committed suicide because of mandates. This is wrong. Earlier today, I heard Kristin Megan Kelly speak. I have followed her and Tammy Clark through this whole thing because from the very beginning, I knew that this was wrong. I'm told that there are investigators, hygienists, that are, there are approximately 200 of them who are also PP experts. Do you realize that two of them are right in your backyard? I would highly suggest you contact and have a personal meeting with Kristin Megan Kelly and Tammy Clark before you make any decisions. Because their job is to identify the risks, and retrain, and tell doctors and nurses which PPE to use in order to keep them safe. They can do the same for our children in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments. Hello? I can't hear you, caller.
Hi, yes, my, my name is Jenna.
Where are you from, Jenna?
Can you hear me?
Yes, where are you from?
Hi, I am, I am from Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Please provide your comments.
Um, I am just calling, I am, I, I am also against the vaccine mandate as well as, um, as well as the making kids constantly get the, um, testing for whether they have COVID or not, as well as wearing masks. One, masks don't work. Um, I had worn masks sanitized. I got, um, COVID from barely being around anyone. I wore two to three masks. Masks did not work for me or for my family. We were very protected. Um, my family also has very, a lot of different diseases that we have in our background. So if, if, it was mandated that we would have to take a vaccine, it could kill my kids and it could kill me. I have a heart problem. And there are other things. We should have a choice. We live in the United States of America. And I appreciate that you guys are listening to all of the people who are talking right now. We do live in the United States of America. Our constitutional rights, they say, we, we are given the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And we should be able to choose what our kids, what are safe for our kids and what aren't safe for our kids, because we know their health history and what can happen. My son was having to wear masks playing soccer, and he could barely breathe, and he has asthma. And he had to choose whether he could play a sport, and it could put him in the hospital. I, there should be a choice. We have a choice. This is our freedom, is to choose what we need, what is right for our kids. And I appreciate you guys hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Next caller, please. State your name, where you're from.
Hello, my name is-
Hi, sorry to interrupt. State your name, where you're from, and your comments. Thanks for calling.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Arnold, and I'm from East Grand Rapids in Michigan. And I'm calling because I have been somewhat sickened by listening to, uh, the comments that I've heard thus far expressed, and that have, the vast majority of them seem to be from the anti-masker, anti-vaccine contingent. And I think that's because they have perhaps been a lot more organized for this kind of protest than us regular folks in the past. So I'm calling today to speak for a group that formed just over a few days ago when, uh, we realized that our schools were not going to be requiring masks for our K-12 students in the fall. And what a dangerous proposition we feel this is. And in just over a few days' time, we have almost 700 members. So I'm calling to urge you to listen, not just to my voice, but to the voice of the group that I am part of that, as I say, represents more than, almost 700 people and growing every day. Because we feel that the absolute necessity for universal masking in schools will save lives this fall. We've seen voluntary masking in schools being much less effective and absolutely will lead to school closures, community transmission, and continued interruption to our, uh, students' education. This summer, we've seen that fail in Missouri, in North Carolina, with an increase in COVID cases and days missed because of quarantines. And as a result, many of those districts have reinstated mask mandates. Battle Creek has done it. We can do this in Michigan. We should do this in Michigan if we care to protect our children. We need to require masks in school. If that impacts your freedom, then you can make the choice to stay home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Someone has YouTube on in the back. Please mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. If you can give me your name, where you're from, and provide your comments, that'd be awesome.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Nicole Lawson. I'm from Oakland County. I am completely opposed to any mandates. There is simply no room for mandatory masks or vaccines in America. I am not anti-anything. I am pro-science, pro-health. I actually have two engineering degrees, um, and I'm very pro-freedom. I've decided to homeschool my children because I am unwilling to subject them to the train wreck that has become public education, including Common Core, critical racist theory, Marxist propaganda, and especially, and most recently, the COVID hysteria. It's been 512 days since 14 days to slow the spread. In those days, I've, I've known three young adults who have taken their own life. And I, I work at a hospital. I don't know anyone that's died of COVID. It's a virus with about a 99% survival rate, if left untreated. I also serve on the safety committee where I work, and I help with fit testing, um, for masks. I can tell you, people are not using their masks correctly, and masks mandates are not backed by science. Masks are not designed to be worn for the long term either. Wearing a mask to keep out of viruses is comparable to trying to keep out mosquitoes with a chain-link fence. In addition to masks being unscientific, it's simply unethical, unconstitutional, and un-American to force, coerce, discriminate against someone to do something to their own bodies that prohibits or restricts critical bodily functions such as breathing. This, too, applies to the experimental gene therapy injection, for which the CDC director recently stated it doesn't even stop the virus from transmitting. What happened to my body, my choice? This time, my body, my choice actually applies. I encourage parents of immunocompromised children who are using that argument to consider asking themselves, what environmental factor do they think their children could have been exposed to? Either way, we do not need to light our cells on fire to keep anybody warm. We are continuously told to trust experts. Science is settled. Vaccines save lives. But the chosen experts have no answer for why 54% of our children are chronically ill, why we have an actual epidemic of autism, why almost $5 billion has been paid out with taxpayer money for vaccine injury, hundreds of thousands of VAERS reports which represent 1%, probably less in my direct observations, and of vaccine injury, and why the Supreme Court referred to vaccines as unavoidably unsafe. Experts, experts, I hear lots of people, well, not a lot, but a few, mentioning we need to follow MDHHS and the experts. They mostly likely created this virus that's being investigated right now in a lab.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Hello?
Yes, if you could please mute YouTube, whoever's got that going. And I could have the name and where you're from of the caller, and then your comments. That would be great. Caller's name, where they're from, and comments, please. If you are speaking, we cannot hear you. Are you muted?
Uh, this is Crystal Fulton. Can you hear me?
Not very well.
Okay. If you can hear me now, um, I'm, represent the United Parents of Livonia Public Schools. Uh, we're parents and community members united to reclaim our parental rights and individual liberties to live in the freedom those before us got for us, and to secure the blessing of liberty for children and our posterity. And we stand for freedom, family, integrity, district transparency, respect of personal privacy, education without indoctrination. And we believe it's the fundamental right of parents to direct the care, education, and teaching of our children. Educ, educators should instill a sense of well-grounded patriotism in our students, recognizing that freedom is special and rare. Medical decisions are the responsibility of the parent, including but not limited to barriers over airways, medical testing, and OCS. Our medical choices should remain private. Children should not be treated differently based on medical choices. And it is not the role of public educators to celebrate sexual lifestyles, promote gender identities, or assert parents' fundamental rights in these delicate matters. So we'll continue to hold informal gatherings that build community, and we will become informed of curriculum programs and policy of our schools. We're going to communicate and partner with our schools and our school boards. And we're going to post action alerts and advocates for our children and our parental rights locally and at the state level. And we're contacting you to find out questions to get clear and direct responses to our questions. We're wondering, will the schools accept funds from the health of the whole child program? And if not, what specifically will be using the funds for? And will our schools be partnering with the proposed health advocate to test students for COVID-19 and other risk-bearing viruses? And will there be any testing on students for any viruses this year? If yes, which students, how often, and under which circumstances? We need to know. Will the schools require immunization records, particularly for COVID-19, or WELKIL records? And are they going to require testing for student athletes? Are the schools going to adapt any of the state or local health department's guidance or recommendations for the '21, '22 school year? Or will we return to in-person learning in the fall as normal, which is no mask, no testing, no vaccine? Will the schools host COVID-19 vaccine clinics or actively promote COVID-19 vaccination of students and/or staff? Will the students or staff be asked or required to share their COVID-19 vaccination status? Will vaccinated and unvaccinated students-
The time is up. Thank you for calling. Time has expired. Thank you for calling.
Thank you for your time.
Next caller, please. Please state your name, where you're from, and provide your comments.
Hi, my name is Linda Milliard. I'm calling from Livonia, Michigan. I have two children in the Livonia Public School system. One specifically has special needs. I'm here to represent me, my- I'm here to represent me, my kids, and most of the parents that have like-mindedness as I do. I'm against forced masking. It's child abuse. It's not healthy, and the masks don't work. They don't filter the virus. I'm also against testing and all of the experimental vaccine mandates. We have an innate immunity, don't we? Yes, we do. I am, I am a nurse, and I work in the health field myself. I have been in the pandemic before the pandemic even started. We had no PPE. We had just ourselves, no masks, no N95s, no nothing. And I am still here. I have my innate immunity, and so do my children. If my child is made to wear a mask at school, I will be pulling them from the public school system. People, you need to read the facts, not just what you're being told on the news. You need to use your critical thinking skills. Think for yourself. Think about logic. Masks do not filter out the virus. Let our kids breathe. We are the parents. Please, we are the parents, not the government. The government does not choose for our kids. Let our kids breathe. Thank you.
Thank you for calling.
I believe we have a point of order for Ms. Lipton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have the opportunity to review the bylaws since it was brought up by a fellow board member regarding public comment. And I would like to just remind the board that according to our own bylaws, the public participa-- and I quote, "The public participation segment of the meeting shall have a limitation of one hour." So I would like to move that we, at least retroactively, enforce somewhat generously for this meeting only a three-hour limitation, which we will, I'm sorry, two hours and 55 minutes, which we will reach in approximately 30 seconds. And that we adhere to the portion of the bylaws that I reviewed, that the, as I said, the meeting shall have a limitation of one hour. And so I would make that motion, since we have now, we're now almost at the three-hour mark.
Yes, we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. McMillan?
The bylaws also say, depending on the number of persons wishing to address the board, and with the imposition of the minimum three-minute limitation, the one-hour limitation in such instances may be extended to permit every person to present views to the State Board of Education. So I would hope that we're not going to support silencing parents. They, you know, they are rising up all across the state. They want to be heard. They're, this is child abuse, what's being done to their children. And this is serious. Like I told that doctor that our governor relies on, people will be held accountable for this child abuse that's going on. And if we're going to silence parents from their passion in wanting to protect their children, well, I guess, you know, good luck.
I would suggest that the proper authority for child abuse is the local county prosecutor's office. As I said, my motion was to not only enforce the bylaw one-hour limit, but I, as I said, as I am well aware as well, that it does say that in such instances may be extended to permit. And I said that, that in addition to my motion to enforce the bylaws, was to retroactively permit the extension to three hours, which we are now at, three, three minutes shy of three hours. And again, I would ask support of that motion.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Lipton, Mr. McMillan, President Albridge, Ms. Snyder.
Yes, I would like to add that the bylaws also state that all persons wishing to address the State Board must declare their intent to the State Board Executive on the appropriate form prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public participation, and that that is not happening here. And so, you know, if, in the future, we choose to remove that from our bylaws, we can certainly make that decision. But as of right now, that is part of our bylaws.
Right. The point is, is that the board is now observing the bylaws in the breach, not in the actual observance. Ms. Snyder?
We always have.
No, we haven't.
We have.
Excuse me, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Snyder.
So I just want to say to the public, there are 23 people still waiting in the lobby, if you can't see. Over the summer, there were hundreds of emails that were just like the testimony that we've had here today. And despite the procedural technicalities of what we can say or not say about continuing to hear your voices, I wish we could. I think that they are a huge testimony to the inaccuracy and the ineffectiveness of the policy in this state for the last 18 months. And there will be a consequence for the fact that we are not willing to hear you today.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pew, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. I always like to hear the voice of constituents. My concern is a little bit different, is that we're beyond our time. We were to adjourn at 3:15 PM, which, normal circumstances, if, again, we're in a setting, we're in an indoor setting. I'm sitting between two people who I asked if they were vaccinated and/or if they would be wearing a mask. They answered to neither, and I don't feel comfortable being here too much longer, sitting in this environment. And I'm wearing my mask because I'm protecting Board Member Snyder, Board Member Tom McMillan, Cassandra, and others.
You don't have to be doing that for me. Take it off if you want. You said you were doing it for me. Don't do it for me.
I would prefer you do it for me.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pew. President Albridge, did you have another comment or not?
No.
Okay, very good. Comments from anyone else? Once, twice, thrice, not, if not, Marilyn?
Yes, yes. Tiffany Tilly, can you hear me?
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilly. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I am in therapy. I had to leave the virtual meeting and come to therapy. I just want to concur that with Ellen, that this is not the platform for, we don't have the authority to mandate that students wear masks. That's not what the State Board does. That is not a function of the State Board. And although I appreciate listening to parents and their concerns about their students wanting us to mandate or not mandate masks, we don't do that. That is a function of the governor, and right now, she's making a recommendation. She hasn't given an executive order. And when there was an executive order stating that students wear masks, that they had to wear masks in schools, there were things in there that said, you know, if you have disabilities, a disability, if your child has health issues, there are different leniencies for those issues. So this, this is not the, this is not the place to, and also, the other place it would be is the local school district, where you talk to your local school board, where you talk to your superintendent, where you talk to the principals, because it comes from the local, I mean, Michigan is a local-controlled state, so it happens on the local level. And I also want to say, it's very offensive to say that masks are child abuse. If masks are child abuse, then Halloween masks are child abuse. Let's not get into saying that masks are child abuse. There are people that have conditions. I have asthma. I have bronchitis. There are times where I need to pull my mask down to breathe, and I make sure that I am away from people when I do so. So I totally understand and empathize with somebody that has health issues or has a disability, and they need to, they need to pull their mask down. But we are not the governing body that makes the decisions that you guys are suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. To, to your point, this board has no authority over masks, vaccinations, or testing, none whatsoever. That doesn't preclude the board, or for that matter, citizens, from speaking about mask vaccinations or testing at this board meeting. But they are not the province of this board. They're not within the authority of the board. And anything that the board would say would be, would be simply in the form of a recommendation or an urging, one way or the other. It wouldn't be a directive. There is no such, there is no such authority. Thank you for sharing in the midst of your physical therapy, Ms. Tilly. We appreciate that. Other board members' comments? Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I mean, I just need to reply. I mean, you know, the forced masking is what people are calling child abuse. You know, certainly if people choose to, that's fine. But, you know, the force, and we've heard of all the horrible consequences that are being done to children, and parents aren't going to sit by and just let this happen when we know the CDC said that this is less problematic than the flu before they removed it a couple of months ago, but for eight months, they said that. I don't think the settled science changed. I think they just had a lot of pressure that wasn't following the narrative. But yeah, I just think that we should be able to hear everybody, and I just hope that we'll vote this down and continue listening to the parents.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Do we have others over here? Dr. Pew, Ms. Snyder? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Ms. Tilly, if you could. Dr. Pew, Ms. Snyder, and then back to you, Ms. Tilly.
In terms of proper authority for our board, we have many times addressed things before our board that are not within our authority, not even close to being within our authority. And yet, here we are, we continue to do that. That is something that is an issue. That aside, it's not like Halloween masks. We've heard from parents here today that talk about how they have autistic kids or deaf children, and they need access to teachers with full facial expression.
It's a vote on whether we continue public comment.
It's discussion.
Yeah, on public comment.
And everybody else has had discussions, so I'm responding to it. I think it's important.
Okay, on public comment.
Yes, to continue to hear public comment.
Fair enough, very good. Okay, Dr. Pew.
We keep hearing misinformation being spewed out. I mean, if we're going to be all over the place here, Tom is bringing up issues, Nikki's bringing up issues, and we're supposed to be voting on whether or not we're going to continue public comment or not.
Right, fair enough. We call the question after Ms. Tilly and PT. Ms. Tilly, you get the benediction, and then we vote.
Yes, having the discussion is not the issue. Having constituents be misinformed about our authority is the issue. Leading parents on, letting them think that we have a vote on whether their child has to wear a mask or not, that's the issue. A lot of the parents that have called in have asked us to vote a certain way on this. We don't have that authority. And again, wearing a mask is not abuse. One of the countries that I studied in was China, and there were people all over China wearing masks for safety, for environmental safety. And they have done so for years. So I don't want to, you know, put out there that this is some type of abuse to people. Now, we have different ideas of, or beliefs of whether this will be safe or not as far as, you know, the virus. You know, some of us do believe that this is healthy, this is helping people, but that doesn't mean that it's abuse. And that's taking it to another level that it should not be taken. And as far as public comment, I'm all for public comment with open bodies. Public comment closes at a certain, in a certain amount of time. So maybe we need to adjust the bylaws or amend the bylaws so that public comment closes after a certain amount of time. And, you know, if people are in by the, whatever period, if it's 20 minutes, 30-minute period for public comment, if it's that long, or by 1:00 PM, because it starts at 1:00 PM, and that way, they can start signing up earlier in the day, you know, then we can see them. But we cannot continue to have the window open throughout the whole meeting. That's disruptive to the meeting, and that's not fair. We have work to do in the meeting. I definitely want to hear people and appreciate people expressing the things that they are experiencing and their children are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
I can't let the attack on me go un, you know, unresponded to. She said that I'm trying to lead parents on. She agreed to put the resolutions on as well. She said that I am, because we're saying that we have the authority. Nobody said, none of us said we have the authority. We said that we wanted to take a position opposing mask mandates and discriminating against students based on vaccine status, and about opposing, you know, the medical testing and quarantining. So, you know, we're not leading parents on, and I resent that. And of course, she agreed to put it on the, on the agenda as well.
Okay. So the vote on the table is to cap public comment at three hours, two hours over current board bylaws. That's the vote.
No, that's not, that is incorrect. It doesn't say one hour. It says we can go past one hour.
The vote, the vote on the table is to cap at three hours, two hours beyond the one hour, without which, without a, an amendment to the bylaws. That's your cap. And you made no such, you made no such amendment. Ms. Lipton, you made the motion. Would you like to clarify, please?
Yes, that is correct. I just, what you, what you stated is correct. I just wanted to just further clarify that the amendment to extend public comment is for today only. Our bylaws do state public comment is one hour. I said, in reference to what we've already heard today, that it made sense to include in the amendment an extension for today only, three hours, which is what we were at, at 3:45. So for today only.
The motion is two hours over the typical one-hour limit. That's the motion. It's been seconded. Marilyn, if you would, take a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder?
This is very wrong. No.
Strahan?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Six-two, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on today's agenda is--
Dr. Wright?
Yes, Ms. Tilly.
And I need to clarify that vote yes to have the resolution on the agenda, I did not, that doesn't mean we can control a mandate. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. The next item on today's agenda is--
Hanging up on all 25 of the people waiting?
The people have the right to write us. They've written on both sides of mask mandates all summer.
Just want to make sure.
They've written on both sides of vaccination mandates all summer, and we continue to respond to them. We want to hear what they have to say. You heard them for three hours. Next item on today's agenda is approval of Michigan out-of-school-time standards of quality. The Michigan out-of-school-time standards of quality were presented to the State Board on June 8, 2021, followed by a period of public comment by 9, 2021. These standards would replace the standards approved by the board in 2013. Today, the board is being asked to approve the standards. Pending board approval, technical assistance will be provided to the before-after out-of-school time and summer learning fields by the Office of Preschool and Out-of-School-Time Learning to support programming to align with the new standards. Presenters are Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnack, Deputy Superintendent of-- Presenters are Dr. Scott Kennick Schneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions, Mr. Richard Lauer, Director, Preschool and Out-of-School-Time Learning, and Ms. Lorraine Thorson, Manager, 21st Century Community Learning Centers. There will be a, uh, a brief PowerPoint. Um, gentle people. Good afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. And thank you, State Board members, for allowing us to come back before you this afternoon to discuss and seek approval of the Michigan out-of-school-time standards of quality. As Dr. Rice said, we were here in June, um, with the standards as an informational item and have since gone out for public comment. Uh, and so I'm going to turn it over to Richard Lauer and Lorraine Thorson to talk about that public comment and eventually seek your approval this afternoon.
Thank you. Just as a quick reminder, um, of the definitions, uh, that were brought before you in June of what out-of-school-time and what we term comprehensive out-of-school-time programs are, you can see them on the screen here. Um, these have not changed since June, so, um, I'm going to move on to the next goal, uh, slide here. I also wanted to point out that these continue to, um, support the Board's Strategic Education Plan goals of improving early literacy across the K-12 spectrum of, uh, early childhood being pre-K, K-1, 2, and middle and high school, um, education, as well as improving the health, safety, and wellness of all learners, including social-emotional help for Goal 3. With that, in terms of the purpose of out-of-school-time stands before I turn it over to, uh, Lorraine, is really to help, um, assist schools, all schools, public school academies, public school districts, because they're all treated the same from our point of view, as well as private providers of out-of-school-time programs. Assist them in establishing a high-quality setting for children when they're in their, uh, settings that 85% plus time, they're not in the traditional daytime school, uh, hours. So that is what we're talking about here, is helping to, uh, provide schools and their partners a, uh, guide, uh, of quality standards in order to drive quality and outcomes for children and youth. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lorraine to talk about our process for public comment as well as the feedback and edits we've done to the standards since June.
Okay. Well, thank you again for, uh, supporting, uh, standards for the out-of-school-time field because, um, as I stated in June, we were the first state in the country to have State Board, um, to look at standards for out-of-school-time. We were this, we, we are held at a high, um, esteem nationally, and I am constantly asked for samples of good, high-quality programs, and we have those to show that we're really doing a great job in out-of-school-time in Michigan. Um, we sent the public comment out through, um, multiple surveys. It went out through MDEs, listserv to all of the state superintendents and state eight, um, organizations for teachers and, and principals and, uh, unions, all of that. Um, it also went out to, um, the Michigan 21st Century listserv, which has about 5,000 members who are interested in out-of-school-time and specifically. And we sent it out through the Michigan After School Partnership, which is one of our state, um, partner agencies that supports our work with the field of out-of-school-time. Um, the comment period was open from June 10th through July 9th, and we had 53 surveys completed. Eight of those surveys, um, did not respond to relevant statements in the standards. Some actually said they never even read the standards, but they provided public comment anyway. Um, and, um, a couple of them addressed issues that are actually part of the licensing rules for out-of-school-time programs in the state for those children who are five, age five to 12, that are under licensed childcare center, uh, roles. And we work with LARA, the Licensing Regulatory Affairs, and we have been letting them know about the different, um, issues that have come up for regulations, and we are working with them on a regular basis. The committee, um, reviewed the relevant comments and included the following edits. And you can see on the screen, um, we added families to the social-emotional environment because it made sense, and it was something that, uh, we had omitted in the first, um, version. We, um, edited the program's staff qualification language for an alignment with the, um, standards that you guys have already approved for, um, for school day and teachers and standards. And we used different, um, language around how we looked at, uh, the standards for staff qualifications. We took out the word "highly qualified" because that was a, a holdover from "No Child Left Behind." Um, we added entrepreneurship and financial literacy to the program enrichment opportunities, and we added ongoing feedback opportunities to the semi-annual evaluation for staff. Um, we reworded the definition of single-purpose programs. Um, in looking at what we had put into the definition and having someone pointed out to us that hadn't read this before, we were looking at it and saying, "You know, you're right. We didn't really define that very well, so we think we did a better job this time." Um, and then we, uh, changed the word "learning styles" to "learning preferences" to align with the current research and accepted prac- practices around, um, learning styles. And, um, we added a link to the Michigan Code of Educational Ethics along with the Code of Ethics that are, um, specific to out-of-school-time programs that is the National After School Association Code of Ethics. Uh, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the comments that, um, were on the feedback. And those who, um, reviewed this and really read the document thought that the opening of, with the history and how, how to best make use of the document was very helpful. Um, another person stated that it was great work, and they look forward to training their staff on the new document. Um, there was comment previously, before we started this process, that people were confused by the old document. And then, um, the, uh, the last stated that overall, she thought the, he, I don't know, I thought the document to be comprehensive and an awesome tool to be used for training and evaluation that can prove to drive any out-of-school-time program, that, drive any out-of-school-time program that follows it to the high-quality, uh, to become a high-quality program. We, in, in the beginning of the document, the, we gave a lot of ideas about how to use this document as a way to really design programs for quality and to really evaluate an ongoing in, um, continuous improvement process for their programs. Um, now, the next steps are that we will work with our stakeholders, especially our Michigan After School Partnership, who helped us to bring together the stakeholder committees. And we will disseminate the newly adopted standards, assuming that you will adopt these standards. And, um, we will have, um, materials developed to distribute to the community at large on how to use the standards, what standards are really important for them to pay attention to it as they begin programming and as they do continuous program improvement. And, um, we'll integrate the revisions into the aligned systems that we already have in place, like the Michigan Registry and the, um, quality, um, continuous quality improvement with the QRS system for childcare. If anybody has any questions, I'm here, and so is, uh, Mr. Lauer.
Um, if we could get a motion on the table, please, Board, and a second. So we have a, a motion by our Board President. Do we have a second?
Support.
By our, uh, Board Vice President, Mr. McMillan to, uh...
Question. Yeah. Um, so I looked at the definition. Can you remind, uh, out-of-times, out-of-school-time, uh, let's see, describe before-school, after-school times, days when there's no school due to teacher training, snow days, school breaks? So what, what exactly, like, give me a few examples of what exactly where these would apply?
Okay. A lot of, um, programs, like, the parents might be working, um, after kids get out of school, so it might be in their school. It might be a, a Y program, a Boys and Girls Club program, a 4-H program. All of these kinds of programs are available to students when they're not in school during the school day.
Okay. So, I mean, and there's no authority other than, I think I read in here, like, fun, like, grants might say you got to follow, or, you know, some other thing.
At this point right now, the only programs that are mandated would be the competitive grants for 21st Century Community Learning Centers to follow the standards. And the way we do that is through, um, having them kind of, uh, incorporate that into their policies and procedures that they have to do for the, um, 21st Century, um, grant process.
Okay. Now, I'm reading, and it, it says that, uh, all of their staff, let me see, where is it? Page 6, C-8. Um, all the staff have to have, uh, valid and current certification CPR and basic first aid. So if they, if there's 20 employees, 19 of them knowing this isn't good enough, it has to be all 20 of them?
Well, in light, these are standards that are the highest possible quality. Um, so in licensing, they have to have, I think, one staff person per space that the kids are in, um, if they're in a licensed program. So we want them to really be thinking about, well, what if that person walks out of the room when a kid has a problem and, and there isn't somebody right there? Maybe that person's on break. So they should be thinking about having more staff, and we prefer that they have all staff. Um, the, the CPR and first aid, um, is offered through our My Registry system as well as, um, other agencies, so they could have that available for staff. We encourage it.
Okay.
It's not really something, we don't mandate anything.
Well, it says shall hold valid, and so if somebody wanted a grant, uh, and it's, and the grant says that we, you have to abide by whatever standards, then they, they won't be able to do the grant if they have 19 of the 20 on staff.
Well, they have, they have some time to get those people trained.
Okay. But ultimately, they'd have to have all 20 instead of just 19 out of 20.
They should. If, especially those that are working with the kids.
Okay.
I mean, if it's a person who's, you know, fixing lunch, would not be.
Oh, I mean, this doesn't say working with, this says all.
It's program staffs, meaning the, the people who are working in the program.
And then seven D, or on page 7, 1D, uh, so it specifies foods that are allowed and not allowed. So fried foods, like corn chips or potato chips, uh, chicken tenders, chicken nuggets, they are not allowed in these standards.
That's what the National, um, After School Association and, and the Y's, healthy eating and physical activity standards state. Um, we realize this is higher than our school lunch. Um, so in our, our 21st Century programs, we would give them a waiver as long, as long as they're following the school lunch program, they would not have to provide exactly this.
Okay.
This is, again, the highest possible quality. If you want to have the highest possible quality, you would follow the standards.
Okay. But like I said, uh, you know, who knows how this will be used in the future? I mean, it may not just be grants. It could be, uh, you know, funding from the feds or state funding someday that says you got to follow the standards. And if the standards say no, no potato chips, if the standards say, another one says, you know, about sugar, another one says if you're celebrating a birthday or holiday, no, you know, it has to be healthy foods, uh, so no birthday cakes, no things like that. So, I mean, you know, and so they would have to either give up the grant or allow the kid to have a, you know, a birthday cake. So I just, I don't know. It, again, we don't know, I under- I understand that these are maybe voluntary, but to some extent, when they're going to be tied to government funding, they may not be voluntary. They may be required in order to get a fund or to keep a fund or to keep funding. Who knows what, how this is used in the future.
So would your recommendation be to, um, state somewhere in there that it's, to the extent practicable, um, to follow the standards or, because...
I don't know.
I agree that, um, it would be very difficult to provide, if you were providing a school lunch-type program, to be able to provide those kinds of foods at the cost that you get reimbursed for school lunch.
I, I, I don't know if we should amend it on the fly here. I just, I don't know. There's probably other things, but I just, those were some of the things that kind of jumped out at me. It seemed a little...
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Other board members? Um, hearing and seeing none. Uh, Marilyn, if you would be kind enough to do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Okay. She, she cannot, she cannot vote. She is listening, and just so you're aware, but she, when she exited, she does not have, fall under the medical exemption, so she, her vote cannot count. So she'll be marked as absent. But we appreciate you listening, Judy. Pam, Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder? Absent. Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly? I believe she's ended her phone connection, so she's absent. Albridge?
Yes.
Do you have a corner?
I believe it fails for lack of votes.
Fails, yeah. Fails for lack of votes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're, um, we are now at the approval of minutes of regular in committee of the whole meeting of June 8th, 2021. Move the minutes.
No move.
Is there a second?
Support.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote?
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes. Yes.
Pritchett? Absent. Pugh?
Yes.
Snyder? Absent during vote. Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly? Absent. Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We are now at the report of the President.
In the interest of time, I will forego the report other than to say welcome to Leah Porter, joining us today. You picked quite a meeting to start, um, but, uh, I think you will find it very rewarding, and so we're, we're glad to have you here.
I'm excited to be a part of it.
Thank you, President Albridge. Um, I have for, uh, for today reflections on critical race theory, race, racism, otherisms, and the teaching of history. Despite the concerns raised by some in the state and country, critical race theory is not a curricular issue in pre-K-12 education. Critical race theory is, in fact, an academic umbrella of reflections and writings developed in higher education, colleges, universities, law schools, and graduate schools since the mid-1970s. It is not a curriculum, and it is not a pre-K-12 curriculum. It is an academic lens or set of lenses developed primarily by those in higher education to consider the elements and impacts of racism, and particularly institutional racism, on our country and citizenry. While there are certainly teachers who have read about critical race theory to inform their thinking about the world in which they live and teach, critical race theory is not a curriculum in Michigan public schools, whose local school districts are responsible for the creation of their own curriculum, as Ms. Porter well, well knows. While critical race theory is not a curriculum, whereas a rule part of a curriculum in pre-K-12 education, race and racism, integral parts of our country's history, should most assuredly be a part of a comprehensive social studies curriculum. Educators have not just the right, but the responsibility to teach the breadth of our history, and this history includes race and racism. Teaching about race and racism can be and is often done within the context of developmentally appropriate teaching about well-known parts of our country's history. It is done not to make some children feel bad and others good, or to denigrate or undermine our country, but rather to acknowledge the fullness and complexity of our history. To choose to ignore race and racism in our teaching is to efface or erase history implicitly or explicitly, and to shortchange our children who deserve to learn the full breadth and complexity of our extraordinary history. Let's look at the U.S. Constitution, which begins, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish..." to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." Beautiful, powerful language. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union." Why would the founding fathers write in 1787, "In order to form a more perfect union"? Well, they wrote it for at least a couple of reasons. First, they knew that they needed a stronger federal government than the Articles of Confederation adopted in 1781 provided. Second, they knew that they were going to need to amend the very Constitution that they were ratifying at the moment. Shortly after ratification of the Constitution, the founding fathers began debating proposed amendments to the very same Constitution that the states had just ratified. Congress passed 12 of these amendments, and the states adopted 10 of these amendments in what would be called the Bill of Rights. The Bill of Rights contains, among others, the rights of freedoms of speech, press, assembly, religion, and petition, we call the First Amendment; right to bear arms, the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution; the prohibition against unreasonable search and seizure; the Fourth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution; and the right to be free from self-incrimination, part of the Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Shortly after ratification of the Constitution, we began to amend that very same Constitution. We began to improve the Constitution. In the words of the Constitution itself, "We began to form a more perfect union." How did we do this? Well, the founding fathers thought about the need for amending the Constitution as they were drafting the Constitution. Article five of the Constitution, debated in 1787 and ultimately ratified by the states in 1789, set forth the process for amending the Constitution. In other words, the founding fathers anticipated the need to amend the Constitution from the beginning. Indeed, there have been far more than just the first 10 amendments, than just the Bill of Rights. There have actually been 27 amendments in all. And indeed, there are many ways that we, as a nation, work to form a more perfect union. In addition to constitutional amendments, we have federal, state, and local laws, legal decisions, elections, public debates, education, and the exercise of First Amendment rights. In the last speech of his life, on April 3, 1968, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. intoned famously, "Somewhere I read that the greatness of America is the right to protest for right." Examples of the importance of race and the presence of racism in American history abound. Black Americans were enslaved for more than 200 years and subjected to Jim Crow laws for another century. Native Americans were stripped of their land, forced to relocate from their homelands, and killed. Japanese Americans were placed in internment camps during World War II. Chinese Jews and Latinos were subjected to their own stigma, discrimination, and abuse. These acts went well beyond those of individual people. They were the acts of our federal government or state governments. Over a long period of time, our country began to correct these injustices. A few examples: the Thirteenth Amendment, again to the U.S. Constitution, ratified in 1865, ended slavery after the Civil War. The Emancipation Proclamation was for during the war, and the Thirteenth Amendment ended it after the war. Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, ratified in 1868, provided that all people born or ratified, born or naturalized in the United States are citizens of this country and the states in which they reside, important if previously you hadn't been considered a citizen, notwithstanding your birth within the country. The Fifteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution ratified in 1870 permitted the right to vote to adult males irrespective of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. That was 1870. In 1954, three quarters of a century later, the U.S. Supreme Court in Brown versus the Topeka Board of Education ruled that the juror segregation of blacks in school districts was unconstitutional, a decision that reversed Plessy versus Ferguson, an 1896 Supreme Court decision that had determined separate but equal accommodations on public transportation to be constitutional. In 1964, Congress passed its landmark Civil Rights Act of the same year to prohibit discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, and national origin. Why would you need to do so if those weren't of issue prior to the passage of the Civil Rights Act? This landmark civil rights law prohibits racial segregation in school districts and public accommodations, as well as employment discrimination. In 1967, the U.S. Supreme Court in Loving versus Virginia ruled that laws banning interracial marriage violated the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection and due process clauses and were therefore unconstitutional. More plainly, people were legally free to marry across ethnicity, some people call race, and states were not free to prohibit a marriage across ethnicity. These are simply a few of the more noteworthy examples of progress relative to race and racism in our history. To cite Minister Theodore Parker, a 19th-century cleric, whose words Dr. King made better known, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." Amen? There are other forms of bias and discrimination in our history. These include, but aren't limited to nativism, xenophobia, or anti-immigrant sentiment, sexism, antisemitism, anti-Asian bias, anti-Muslim bias, and homophobia. Like racism, many of these forms of bias and discrimination have waxed and waned through our history, both individually and systematically. An example of progress, in 2015, the U.S. Supreme Court in Obergefell versus Hodges ruled that the right to marry is guaranteed to same-sex couples, and that prohibitions against same-sex marriage were violations of the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection, and due process clauses. Let me bring it home, board. In 1870, as I mentioned earlier, Fifteenth Amendment permitted adult males the right to vote irrespective of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. 1870. Almost a century later, almost a century later, Congress passed the Voting Rights Act of 1965 to prohibit racial discrimination in voting, what they'd done 95 years earlier, and to create broad voting protections. In 1870, Louisa Swain became the first woman to vote in Wyoming, 20 years before Wyoming statehood. I have a coin that features this achievement, a gift from the Wyoming State Superintendent, the recent Council of State Chiefs, Chief State School Officers Conference in Wyoming. Wyoming was the first jurisdiction in the country, Mr. Strayhorn, to permit broad voting rights for women, though there are a number of examples across the country of jurisdictions that permitted women's voting for discreet purposes or had women test their voting laws prior to 1870. In 1920, board, 50 years later, 50 years after Utah, as a territory, not as a state, 20 years before it became a state, as a territory, 50 years after Utah's a territory says all women can vote, we pass the Nineteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. We ratify Nineteenth Amendment, and it says, "Women get the right to vote across the United States." So to bring it home, board, once upon a time in our great country, only one of you would have been eligible to vote. Harvard Law School graduate and activist Randall Robinson reflected years ago about all that he had learned about our history since graduation from college and law school. He concluded that he had needed to be taught far more as a child than he had been. "And I needed to know that," he said, as he reflected upon elements of the history of our country and world that he had learned as an adult, but about which he had been unaware as a child. Likewise, our children today need to know our rich, marveled history, and to consider its layers, its contradictions, and its complexities. They need to know about the history that I have just shared and much, much more. They need to know about Juneteenth and the Tulsa Race Massacre. They need to know that blacks in our country, in a number of states, weren't permitted to vote before the Civil War, were permitted to vote immediately after the Civil War, and lost that right shortly after Reconstruction in many southern states for close to a century thereafter. They need to know that as part of their education. The rights we hold dear can be lost. I'm reminded of the Plujame, the Never Again Holocaust Remembrance Movement. We teach history so that we can learn from it, so as not to relive the tragic moments and to help continue our inexorable, inexorable progress as Americans to keep building a more perfect union. It's in the Constitution. I didn't write it. I'm old, but that, not that old. Like many of you, I regularly watch the inauguration of our presidents. I watched this past January, and again, like many of you, was struck by recent Harvard graduate and poet Amanda Gorman, who recited, "The hill we climb." I shared two quotes from this beautiful poem. First, "Just is, isn't always justice." Just is, isn't always justice. Just because something is a particular way doesn't mean that it has to be a particular way, or that this is the right way, the just way. And then second, Gorman writes, and this is a 23-year-old board, second, Gorman writes, quote, "Somehow we've weathered and witnessed a nation that isn't broken, but simply unfinished," unquote. Isn't that beautiful? That's an amen moment as well. That hearkens back to the Constitution. That hearkens back to, "In order to form a more perfect union." What our founding fathers wrote in the Constitution, what our founding fathers immediately role modeled by passing the Bill of Rights shortly thereafter. Considered and passed 12 amendments, states ratified 10 amendments, created a structure for more amendments. To my point, we're works in progress as individual human beings, as a nation, and as a world. We have not just a right to acknowledge and share our history in this spirit as educators, Ms. Porter, but the responsibility to do so. Race and racism may be inconvenient for some, may be uncomfortable for others, and may be searing for still others. But because they are inextricably a part of our history, inseparably a part of our history, they must be taught. I have confidence in our teachers, all of our teachers, not simply our Michigan Teacher of the Year, not simply our Regional Teachers of the Year. I have confidence in our teachers' efforts and abilities to work through and teach these challenging issues, to share the fullness and complexity of our history with our children, and by extension, to permit our young people, armed with the knowledge of the past, to help assess the progress that we have made as a nation, and the progress that they wish to make and help make in their lifetimes. And those are my comments, board. And I apologize that they were a little bit longer than they, than they normally are. But you, but you know, you, you got me going early. Didn't even need caffeine this morning. If we could, if we could pivot now to our three resolutions that were placed on the agenda.
Don't want to do K first?
I beg your pardon, but that's fine.
State and federal legislative.
I'm happy to do that. Mr. Ackley, if you would like to do a brief state and federal legislative update?
Hi, I'm good at brief, especially now. The summer legislature's in recess. The SPE Legislative Committee meeting did not meet as a result of the legislature being out on recess. They are expected to come back, the Senate's coming back August 25th for a day, and the House is going to come back, scheduled next week for three days, and then not again till September 9th. They continue to, as you, as you know, they have passed the state aid budget for next year. They continue to work on the department budgets, and they expect to begin working on those in earnestly with the administration next week. Other than that, there's really nothing to report. New?
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Dr. Pugh, Mr. McMillan?
My question is around, and maybe this is to Ellen, it's around the CRT legislation pieces. There's one in the Senate, one in the House.
Yes.
And if you have any thoughts on those, but then to Chairwoman Lipton, can we meet so we can work on something in response to those?
Sure. So, so Marty, to the, to the, to the content?
There's a Senate bill and a House bill. The Senate bill prohibits the teaching of critical race theory or Project 1619, and it penalizes school districts if they do. There's a House bill that basically does the same thing, except it does not have the financial penalty in it for districts. So there have been no committees meeting on that. They've been introduced in both the House and Senate, but there's been no committee meetings to bring those up for discussion or vote.
But what I hear you saying is you'd like to see our legislative committee look at this, and I appreciate that. Ms. Lipton, can you hear that?
Yes, I can. Thank you. And I would, would definitely look at, to that as a, as a directive or a strong suggestion that at our next meeting, the legislative committee will look at that issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Marty, as I understand it, the House passed the higher ed budget that forbids state universities from having a vaccine mandate, and the Senate did not. I mean, it's not in there. Is that, is that your understanding?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay, so it's in conference. And, okay, I just wanted to make sure, that's, that's what I had heard. I just want to make sure that that's your understanding as well. Would that, it's in boilerplate. If, if, if that prohibition on a vaccine mandate stands, would that mean that, that they would have to forego all of their funding if they implement a vaccine, vaccine mandate?
I think that was the intention. That was, that was the intention of the language? Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Ackley? Going once, twice, thrice? Mr. Ackley, thank you ver, well, I see half a hand?
Well.
Is that a full hand?
Yeah, I guess, you know, where, where are we with the Unlock Michigan? I don't know if you can see to any of that with the, to Tom's point, where we have politicians that are stepping in front of public health. Do, do you know where those steps are?
The legislature has passed a bill.
Right. Do you know anything on the petition side, on the referendum side, if updates or what that looks like?
No.
This is the second. There's two parts, right? There is the one for the governor's powers, and then there's the other for the, for the local public health.
Yeah, stop the tyranny of the health director.
Yeah, I can find out for you. I don't have anything off the top of my head.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ackley, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it. It will not be similarly short next month. We have an anti-mask mandate resolution before the board. You voted to put it on the agenda a number of hours ago. Mr. McMillan, since the public has not seen this, would you be kind enough to read it, please?
Sure, I would make a motion to approve it first. I think that would be.
That's fine, not a problem.
Is there a second?
You're, you're, you're making the motion. Do we have a second?
No move.
We have a second. If you would read it, please.
Anti-mask mandate resolution, whereas according to the CDC, students under the age of 17 are much less likely to die from COVID-19 than from a car accident, whereas health-compromised family members and school staff who won a COVID-19 vaccine can easily obtain it, whereas the ability of students to see facial expressions of teachers and fellow students is important for their education and mental health. Now, therefore, be it resolved. Now therefore be it resolved, this Michigan State Board of Education opposes any mask requirements of K-12 students at any school in Michigan.
Okay, very good. And would you like to speak to this as well?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's pretty straightforward. Based on all the, you know, the tons of comments we got, I could add to it, but really, you know, last year, when I was commenting at the board, saying that these mask mandates were not necessary, and, you know, the CDC, and I've got the statistics exactly, but for kids under 17, let's see, well, first of all, yeah, I mean, the CDC did, and I have this on my website, I couldn't figure out where else to put it, they did, up until a couple of months ago, make it clear the risk of complications for healthy children is higher for flu compared to COVID-19. And then also, CDC has kids, the infection fatality ratio for COVID-19 for 0 to 17 years of age is 2 in 100,000 for death, and for death in a car accident, it's 11.5 per 100,000. So obviously, I was, you know, there's a problem with relative risk. People don't really understand. They hear something and they don't know what's it relative to, and so I think it's important, you know, to make it clear that we don't have a problem letting people drive, that we don't, you know, get horrified or have problems. So, you know, children dying that are under 17, according to CDC statistics, are tremendously less likely from COVID than a car accident. Secondly, last year, when I brought this up, I was told, "Well, but it's where they bring it back home," you know, "or the teachers." Well, now, there's a vaccine out there, family members, teachers, staff can get it, it's easily obtainable. You would think that they would say, "Okay, therefore, that is..."
I'm sorry, when you say "they can get it," what was the...
Vaccine.
I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
So, you would, but the goalpost moves again. So it's not, you know, the settled science apparently isn't settled, and it has to move again. And so even though that was the issue that was everybody focused on, of course, kids are less likely than a car accident. It's not as bad as the flu, but how can we get them and force them to wear masks in an authoritative, you know, tyrannical way? Well, let's say it's the family members. Well, now that's taken care of, and so now, you know, I don't see a reason why there should be a mask mandate, especially with all the harm being done, and I just listed one, that it's important to see the facial expressions of students, of teachers and fellow students. But yeah, I mean, what we heard today could be added, so many of the things about, you know, the harm for special ed kids and for young kids, and it's just, it's just a real problem. So that's why I put it before us, is, again, there's no authority. It's for us to say that we oppose mask requirements and mandates.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McMillan, Dr. Pugh, Ms. Snyder.
I don't even know which order to go in, but I do have revamped language that I'll try to figure out how to put forward as an amendment, I believe.
Okay.
But before I do that, because there has been so much misinformation that has been allowed to go forward, I don't even know where to begin with all of the misinformation that has been put out. This has been a moving target. Our children and their families' lives have continuously have been put at risk because of the propaganda, the rhetoric that I've heard here today, and unfortunately, is being carried and spewed and led by two of our board members. First of all, as a public health professional, we've always heard that if you do your job well, people will not know what prevention, how many lives you've saved, how many illnesses that you've prevented. So let me first of all say that, and even saying that, when we look at our COVID numbers now, and I know certain people don't believe that, but I'm not really talking to you, I'm talking to the people who heard misinformation. When we look at the positivity rate today, it's at 7%. We like to see our positivity rate around 3%. This time last year, the seven-day positivity rate was around 4%, and that is because those of us who have been vaccinated, we continue to, we've made that sacrifice, we've made, our children have made the sacrifice of having to stay at home, our parents have made the sacrifice of keeping their children at home, and I'm talking about the majority, because we get a lot of people who talk loud, but that is not the majority. There are people who want their children in school, they want their children to not have to wear masks, and unfortunately, there is a body of people, a small body of people who have held us hostage. You can carry a gun, you can get in a car and drive, but the moment that you put me into that situation and into that scenario, such as you sitting across from me, me sitting next to Nikki, and you not wearing a mask, and if you're not protected in other ways such as a vaccine, that's no longer your right. You're putting my life in jeopardy, our children through your propaganda and your rhetoric, their lives in jeopardy. And also, it causes confusion. We have parents who don't have easy access to vaccines, so that's an issue, but then when you have that on top of the added propaganda and misinformation, it makes it very confusing. Let me speak to the issue of the flu. When we talk about the flu, what I've seen is that there is typically around 198 deaths, 200 deaths, with H1N1, it may have been around 350. So we've had over 400 deaths, and let me say this, because while we're talking about the data on COVID and children, the data is skewed. I'm looking at information, and this is from the American Academy of Pediatrics. Most up-to-date numbers include testing figures from only 11 states, according to the American Academy of Pediatric. Of course, these are doctors for pediatricians, it's not a pillow salesman, it's not an optometrist, but these are pediatric doctors that are giving me this information that I take as credible information. Only 23 states and New York City reported hospitalizations. 43 states reported mortality rates, but Florida, Florida, which is leading the nation in child COVID hospitalization, of course, being led by a presidential hopeful, has stopped reporting child hospitalizations just in late June, and that's as their numbers were skyrocketing, skyrocketing, had gone up like 80%. We sit here in Michigan, where we've been reported as the fifth-leading state for COVID data. Let's talk about, and I'll stop for a moment, but let's talk about auto accidents. The data that I'm looking at, that I was looking up while I'm listening to people and trying to listen to the information that was being said and research it, but I'm seeing that 38 children in Michigan died of a fatal car crash between 0 and 15. This is 2016 data. 139 between 60 and 20, so that's 177 fatal car crashes. But your child, your child, people who have children, all the children here in Michigan are asked to wear a seatbelt. So 177 fatal car crashes. If you want to talk about car crashes, they are wearing seatbelts. Our children need to be in masks, not only to protect themselves, but to protect others. We sat here and we talked about this airborne disease, and there already not being this layer of protection around adequate ventilation. I mean, you want to take the protection that they have away? You're killing our children. That's on you.
Oh, come on.
And let me say one more thing.
I'm killing your children.
If I...
Is that what you just said?
Let her finish, and then you can respond.
Is that what you said?
That is what I said. That's what came out of my mouth, because you are killing families. We're talking about children who are becoming orphans. We're talking about children who cannot go to school. That's on you. That's not on me, a public health person, and the people here who are making the right decision. That is on you, that our children cannot safely go to school.
Pathetic.
And our...
If you could, if you could.
And our...
You tell me I'm killing kids, and you think I should sit here and listen to this?
What I think you should do is let her finish, and then you can speak, okay? Or you can leave. Okay, let's roll.
I'm not the enemy. I am not the enemy. The people who are trying to protect our children are not the enemy. We need to get the facts straight, we need to put accurate information out, or shut our mouths, because we need to go up against the enemy that is the enemy, and that is COVID. And COVID is taking us out by our lives, but our economy. That is on you. That is on the people who support the rhetoric and the propaganda that you support, and I have some language that I would like to replace this resolution. I'll wait, I'll wait.
Very good. Mr. McMillan to you. I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder to you, and then Mr. McMillan. Go ahead.
So I'll try to keep it strictly to, yes, getting the facts straight, but before I get to the point of getting the facts straight, I will say, "I will never walk out of here and feel like I am responsible for killing your children, ever." You can say that all day long for the salacious concepts of what the media might pick up, but I will never take responsibility for that. When we talk about rights and we think about actions that we take, healthy boundaries for healthy relationships, I don't tell you what to do with your body for me, I do what I do with my body. Those are my choices, not your choices. And so if I must do something with my body for you, you do not have healthy boundaries. Those are not rights. Those are rights that you get to have, but that I don't get to have. That's not healthy. That is not healthy governance, that is not, it's just like, I can't even, I could go down the road the whole day about what's wrong about that concept, that your rights can only be carried out if I'm required to do something with my body. I will leave it at that. We heard today on public comment something that is very factual, that we continue to not hear over and over and over again, that honestly, Tom, I probably should have included this in comment, and perhaps we should try to amend it with the other amendments that are potential, but N95s fitted and tested are the standard of care for working with patients that transmit, who are actively symptomatic and sick, with highly transmissible respiratory viruses. That is what keeps us safe. Me choosing to put that on keeps myself safe from getting it from you if you are symptomatic with a highly infectious upper respiratory illness. To go further, highly transmissible upper respiratory viruses are not just transmissible via breathing. You can cough and get a large droplet and put it on my dress, I can walk home and give it to my kids. Direct contact is also an issue. So the idea that you say, "Hey, the mask is what makes everything better," it doesn't. If this is a virus, something like Ebola, if you will, that kills 40 to 60% of people, depending on where, what version we're talking about, we're not just trying to wear masks, but COVID and SARS are not those viruses. And by the way, let's go back to when we tried to handle Ebola, which is the last pandemic we experienced before this one. Anybody who said you should have your temperature taken before you get on a plane if you're traveling from a hotspot, or they suggested any kind of isolation or travel ban, we were called isolationist, protectionist, and racist. So I would say that it's incredible that it has switched in such a manner. That's a sidetrack. If we're not wearing N95s fitted and tested, it's a worthless endeavor. And that is why an anti-mask mandate resolution at this point in time without, I mean, you'd have to take your health departments and turn them into N95 distributors for a mask mandate to be effective. That's a fact. That's not propaganda. That's science. That's why you had so many registered nurses coming, and honestly, that blew me away. I've been saying that for months to people that I love. That's not effective. So you want a mask mandate, but you don't want to actually follow the science, and then anybody who speaks up and says anything the opposite of what you have to say, propaganda. I'm killing your children. That's absolutely bizarre and inappropriate. So honestly, I think that the only amendment I would make to it, Tom, is that whereas N95s fitted and tested are the standard of care when we are attempting to mitigate the spread of highly infectious respiratory illnesses, that's an amendment that would work for this.
Okay. Are you offering that as an amendment?
I imagine that they will, you know...
Well, but if it's a friendly amendment, and the maker and the seconder agrees, then it comes on, so...
I would make a motion that that's probably the one thing that I...
I'll accept that motion.
Please repeat the amendment.
Whereas N95 masks, comma, fitted and tested, comma, are the standard of care for preventing the transmission of highly respiratory, highly transmissible respiratory viruses.
And where do you propose to put that?
You could put it right before "Now therefore be it resolved."
Okay, thank you.
And unless that's part of a...
That's fine, there's nothing wrong with that, that's fine. I just wanted to, we're doing the meeting minutes, we want to get it right. Okay. Mr. McMillan to you, and then to Dr. Pugh for her amendment.
Yeah, I too, as the maker, want to make an amendment, because I should have put in there that whereas...
You want to amend your own piece?
Families are responsible for the medical care for children, for their children. So does the seconder agree to that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll put that just after hers.
Okay, could you repeat it for Marilyn, please?
Whereas families are responsible for the medical care for their children.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the base resolution by the offer of, I'm sorry, an amendment of the base resolution by the offer of the base resolution. Did you have more to share?
It's a friendly amendment, so the maker and the seconder...
Fair enough, no, no, understood. No, I'm not suggesting of...
Yeah, I do have, I do have, you know, I just want to say that, you know, the calls that we heard, and I understand, I disagree, but I understand that those who don't like those calls, there was another 25, they were coming in about 30 to 1 in my estimation, 30 opposed to the MAC mandates, and one supportive. So I can see why somebody might want to cut them off. I totally disagree with it and think it's really, really bad, but, you know, I think this, I would just warn those who are really super concerned about, you know, they even want to increase public education funding, because this kind of stuff is going to erode support of public education. And I don't mean a little bit, I mean, I haven't seen this much passion, I didn't see this during the Tea Party movement when Republicans just cleaned the clocks in political. This passion that I'm hearing and seeing across our state, you know, is going to, if the response continues to be, "Too bad, we're going to be the tyrants who decide what is best for your kids, even though it's harmful," I mean, when you harm, when you are putting harmful mandates to children, parents are going to get very, very upset and exercised, and that is what you're seeing. This is just the beginning. And so I would say tread lightly. Those who think that, you know, the erosion of public support, public education isn't going to happen, this is what's going to make it happen, people pulling their kids out, refusing to allow public schools to harm their children or pull them out, I mean, it's just, you know, I think that it's quite a moment right now, and I think that support of this resolution and the others, I think, is something that would be very wise. Thank you.
So it is a moment, and we appreciate you sharing that. The public comment was not necessarily indicative of what we've been experiencing over the last several months. We have a number of people who write us and ask us to impose a mask mandate. We have no more ability to impose a mask mandate than to prohibit a mask mandate at the State Board or the State Department, but nonetheless, we get those communications from people who are unclear about the authority and who hope that somehow we will at a minimum exercise our influence, albeit in the absence of authority.
Our emails have been 300 to 1 of opposing mandates that we've been getting.
Okay, so those are your emails. I don't doubt that.
Well, all of us have been getting them.
Fair enough, but I've been getting others, okay? I've been getting... Fair enough. But I've been getting others, okay? I've been getting a range of emails on this issue. I'm sorry. Dr. Pugh, to you for a proposed amendment?
Yeah, and before I do the proposed amendment, just, I just want to make sure that, because again, we have to correct misinformation. I am very familiar with wearing respirators versus masks. Since this started, I have only been able to get a hold of a KN95. Would love to have a N95. But one of the things that we decided, public health, medical experts, virologists, all have decided is that if I put on this mask, my aerosols, my droplets will not reach and stagnate in the air. We have, that's something in a public health emergency, sometimes you just have to deal with what you have and what you can deal with. And so there was studies that were done that if I put the mask on, you put your mask on, then it's not necessarily protecting me, but you're protecting me, I'm protecting you. I know that that's kind of hard to grasp for some people in a time of an emergency if you don't accept this as a public health and economic emergency. The other thing is that we can no longer let threats hold us hostage, because it's like every time we try to appease a threat, then we get farther out and this disease worsens. This is something that we can get a hold of if we all can see this as the enemy versus a political opportunity. I will also say that I do have some language that I do want to present, because I want to make sure that we support those folks at the local level, those decision-makers at the local level, to help to uphold them and give them some sort of support. Though, you know, what we say, you know, may not carry any sort of authority as far as law, but being able to give them some sort of support, because they're taking attacks, they're taking threats to their life, and they're right there at that local level, meaning the local health departments, the local, the local school boards, superintendents. But being able to give something that is based on science. And so should I just go ahead and just propose it?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, whereas Michigan, and I'm putting this together as we're talking, so it'll be glitchy. Whereas Michigan has the fifth highest number of, and I should say, whereas Michigan is reported to have the fifth highest number of cumulative COVID-19 cases among children, according to data reported by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Whereas the CDC has elevated Michigan's risk for community spread of COVID-19 to substantial, meaning the state is now falling in the category where we should all wear masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. Whereas the number of hospitalizations related to COVID-19 among adolescents in the United States was about three times greater than hospitalizations linked to influenza over three recent flu seasons, according to a study published by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Whereas COVID-19, unlike the influenza, is linked to multi-system inflammation syndrome, a serious condition that causes dangerous inflammation in parts of the body, like the heart, lungs, kidneys, brain, or GI organs. Whereas the state and national, whereas state and national authorities, including MDHHS, the Centers for, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the CDC, the American Medical Association, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, all recommend a layered prevention strategies approach. Whereas the CDC recently modified their guidance for prevention of COVID-19 in K through 12 schools and early childhood childcare settings, recommending universal masking indoors at all school facilities and events for students, teachers, staff, and all visitors regardless of vaccination status. Now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education--
Hello?
--supports school district--
Please mute your YouTube. Thank you.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports school district mandates for universal masking on buses to, and, this is, okay, masking on buses and indoors at school facilities and events for students, teachers, staff, and all school visitors regardless of vaccination status.
I'm sorry, can you read that last part again?
I thought you were going to say the whole thing.
No.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports school district mandates for universal masking on buses and indoors at all school facilities and events for students, teachers, staff, and all visitors regardless of vaccination status. That last part is bumpy, so it's probably to be fixed, but, you know, I guess if we get past the main part.
Well, let me suggest this. It's 5 o'clock. We've gone for four and a quarter hours without a break. So is there a way that we could break? Because people do have some physical needs, and maybe we can print that out, because unlike Ms. Snyder's amendment, which is, which is brief, Mr. McMillan's amendment, which was brief, yours is, Dr. Pugh, I believe, longer than the base resolution itself. And I think it would bear, just as I asked Mr. McMillan if he could share the writing, I think it's similarly fair that you would share that writing, that we could take a look at it and then vote it up or down, and then vote the base resolution up or down at that point as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, very good. So let's say this, we're sitting on that clock, 5:03. Who knows how accurate that is, but I'm going to call it pretty accurate. 5:15. If you would send that to one of us so that we can print out--